Okay. Good evening and welcome to our virtual school board meeting on August 3, 2020. As Policy 006.1 limits the attendance of board members at board meetings through electronic communications to extraordinary circumstances, and requires the physical presence of majority of the school board members, we need to vote to suspend the policy until the next meeting. Therefore pursuant to school board policy 003 functions, I ask for a motion to suspend Policy 006.1 until our next meeting.
This is DJ Schultz. I make a motion to suspend Policy 001 to our next meeting, please.
Is there a second?
Second, that Susan Hunsinger.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And this is just a reminder to board members, please identify yourself before each statement and your action. It's important because individuals from the public may be joining the meeting using the audio feature, so they may not necessarily be able to see you. And then we also ask that you mute yourself when you're not talking, so there is no background voice. Please be aware that the Happer-Horsham School District Board of School Directors will be recording this meeting. The opinions expressed by any member of the public does not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Happer-Horsham School District Board of School Directors, and are solely those of the presenter. The board hereby expressly disclaims all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public. Any unauthorized rebroadcasting of any video, audio, and/or still image of this meeting is strictly forbidden without written permission of the Happer-Horsham School District Board of School Directors. We could please have the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible with liberty.
Liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Riker could be had a roll call, please.
Yes, Madam President. You start with Jennifer Will.
Here.
Can't hear you, Bob.
Can't hear you.
Bob, is there a volume button on the cord to your headset?
Yeah, sometimes if the light's on in that button, it's a person.
Sometimes you lean on it and it'll change.
I doubt that was it, but. Thank you, Tara. So Dave Brown, Arakums.
Hi, yeah.
Susan Hunsiger-Hoff.
Here.
Teresa Brown.
Here.
Mary McCouch. Jim Greenhall.
Here.
DJ Schultz.
I'm here.
Tara Connor-Halston.
Here.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
Prior to this meeting, we did hold an executive session to discuss legal and personnel matters. So moving on to the minutes, so I'm looking for approval of the minutes from the meeting on July 20, 2020.
Teresa Brown, so move.
Is there a second? Second, David Brown, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, so now we're going to move on to the presentation. As we did in the last meeting, we will have the presentation on the scenarios for reopening, and then any questions from the board, and then we will have the public comment.
Thank you, Madam President. Just gonna get the presentation up and running here. All right. We see the presentation. Yes. So thank you, Madam President, members of board. I want to thank the community for joining us this evening. A reminder that we are broadcasting live on Facebook as well. So hopefully we have a broad audience for both here on Zoom and also on Facebook Live. So we do appreciate everyone coming out tonight and expressing their interest and concern for our schools and the children of the Happer-Horsham School District. The feedback, engagement, and interest in the students, their education, their health and safety has been overwhelming. And while the perspectives on how to proceed have varied greatly, what has been consistent is that people have been passionate advocates for what they feel is the best interest of their own children and the children of our school district. And so for that, we should be proud. These scenarios that we'll be sharing this evening, continuation of what we shared last meeting, none of the scenarios are ideal. In fact, all of them have significant drawbacks and are all frankly, in some ways undesirable. But with the situation changing rapidly, I believe that we have made progress. And we do understand the benefits and drawbacks of each of the scenarios. And we're moving a lot closer to making a recommendation. So with that, I will begin with just telling, reviewing our agenda for this, for the meeting. We'll talk about our purpose, and then I'll bring you through a little bit of our background from the last meeting, and where we'll bring us through tonight through a recommendation. So starting with the purpose of the meeting, we want to present to you the progress on the scenarios to reopen schools, share with you a little bit of the feedback that we've received and the community perspectives on how we should proceed, review some relevant trend data, both in the area and in the state, and recommend an opening scenario for the 2020, 2021 school year. So the timeline that I will share is the same timeline we shared last meeting. On the 20th, I did make a presentation to you on the status of the reopening. Since then, we had an opportunity to gather a lot of feedback. There have been well over 100 comments made to reopening at happer-horsham.org. All of those comments have been read and reviewed, and we thank you for those perspectives. Many of those questions, we've tried to answer through the presentation this evening. We've also surveyed staff and surveyed our community on the reopening scenarios, and I'll share some of those results. And we continue to clarify those committee recommendations. So the presentation will basically be about what we've done in these last couple of weeks that helped us get to this point here on August 3. So on the 20th, these were the scenarios that we discussed. As a reminder, if the state is at any point entering into the red phase, that would result in state mandated schools being closed across the state for all in-person instruction. All instruction would have to be done remotely. If we're in yellow or green, we've reviewed, which we currently are, of course, we're reviewing these three possible scenarios. Scenario number one, all instruction provided remotely. Number two, that would be a hybrid model. And number three is students returning to school fully for a full school day. We also talked about enrollment in a district-run cyber school, and I'll talk to you about some of the feedback we've received on that. Now, we did receive since our last meeting, some clarification from the governor that he has no intentions of closing schools across the state. So if decisions were to be made, they're to be made at the local level. And so while there is some county consultation amongst superintendents and districts, the primary responsibility is ours as a board and community to decide what's best for Happer-Horsham. As we've looked at our options and our scenarios, we have been planning in a way that allows for a smooth transition between these scenarios at any point throughout the year. We know that regardless of what may be decided this evening, that there could be unfortunately, and hopefully not, but there could be some type of outbreak or case, case rising, cases rising in the school district that would warrant a closing that could transition us to red. But we also would want to think about ways to bring as many students back to us as possible. So I'll share with you some of the survey feedback that we've received since our last meeting, and reminder that we surveyed the community in June, and then once again in July, and I'll share with you a little bit some of the different perspectives. So this was our survey responses with both from families on the left and staff on the right with the survey that we did in July. This, the survey itself did have some limitations, and I want to be open about what those limitations would be. First, we're going to be, we are going to be comparing some data from June to July. However, it's not a controlled sample, so the respondents from June could not very well not be the exact same people that responded in July. We know that that presents some limitation. Furthermore, there was the possibility that someone could respond to the survey more than one time as a family member. That was a limitation to the survey. I will say that we monitored the progress and the results of the survey regularly from the first, you know, almost the responses started coming in right away. We've got, you know, over almost 3,000 responses, you can see 27, 25 family responses. We monitored the trends about levels of support for the three scenarios. And while the sample size did increase rather rapidly as the survey was open, the trends and the balance actually remain relatively consistent throughout. So we have reason to believe that the data that's shared with us does provide some meaningful information for us. Again, this is the statistical study. This is an opportunity for us to gather the general feeling of the community. And you can see, as I shared earlier, that there are a range of opinions for how strongly people support or oppose each of the options. The trends are relatively similar between staff and families, but there are some, there are some differences. As you can see, you can see some additional opposition from staff for a full return than families. But you see a, quite honestly, a pretty high number of people opposing both the full return and the remote, the remote option from our, from our families. We're gonna look at this data a couple of different ways with this being, this being the first. The second, again, this is the same, same data, but looking at it in comparison to the responses that we received in June and the responses that we received in July, again, families on the left, staff on the right. These arrows represent the trends, the trends of each of the staff and family responses from June to July. And you can see that the trends are comparable from families and staff with the direction of the responses that we've received. So you can see levels of support. This question is percent of respondents somewhat or strongly support each scenario. So you can see the levels of support by both families and by staff has decreased from a full return to people, both staff and families being relatively confident about, about a full return in June, and, you know, not, not as much now in July. The hybrid responses remained, you know, relatively similar as far as people's level of support for hybrid from June to July, both from families and staff. And you can see also the support for remote learning increasing by both families and staff from June to July. You can also see the sample sizes, again, not a controlled sample, but we did receive a lot more responses in July than June. So, you know, there's some conclusion that I think we can draw from this, that I think there are some general, generally, people's confidence in a full return is declining. And I think there's a lot of reasons that could be contributing to that. I think that's a, that's a fair generalization to make in summary. And then looking at the data, just one more, again, one more way, you can see the staff and student response, I'm sorry, staff and family responses, this is the same data that was shared in the last slide, just presented differently, but you can see the trends between June being in blue, July being in August, you can see the trends for remote going in the same direction, for hybrid going in the same direction, for full return going in the same direction. Obviously, there's more pronounced of a difference among our staff responses with the full return in July than in June. And one thing that, that I think is fair to say is that the sentiments around what schools should be doing and sentiments around confidence around the virus itself just changed so rapidly. So one might predict that, you know, a month from now, people may have differing perspectives as well. And, you know, a month from now is still not our scheduled start date for school. So we know that that, things could change rapidly and that we, we may have to, again, once again, revisit. And that is, that is a possibility that exists. We also asked families what their interest would be in the Hatter Academy, and whether or not families would be, regardless of what the opening would be, if you'd be interested in a cyber option for the Hatter Academy. And you can see the responses here by, by school and also by level. So you can see we had 774, excuse me, 774 students interest, interest expressed some interest. This wasn't a commitment in any way, this is an expression of interest. And those are, you know, divided amongst the, amongst the four elementary schools. Our middle school interest about 476, our high school interest about 457. So that would be, you know, a little over 1,700 students if this number of students would commit to the Hatter Academy, which would in essence make it, make it our, our largest school. Of all of our schools, the Hatter Academy would have the highest enrollment of the schools. You can also see the grade distribution over here to the right. And it's relatively, you know, relatively even distribution across grades with the exception of 12th grade being less interest in, in the virtual option. But certainly interest at all levels by all grades from all schools. So we know that that is, that is indicative of some of the sentiment around comfort level for families and students returning. So one of the strategies, and I just want to thank the community, because we know we have asked, asked you many times to participate in surveys, and we know that that bears with it some challenges. But the information you've been providing for us has been helpful, and we thank you for your willingness to engage in those surveys. So we did ask our students who currently receive bus transportation, if they would be willing to, in the event of a return to school, decline school transportation. This would, of course, de-densify some of the busing and allow for some additional social distancing to occur on the bus. As you know, one of the challenges in, in transportation is that you have very limited options to spread students out. We don't really have logistically an option to run multiple bus routes to the same school and still operate a schedule because our buses support not only the private schools, but they support all three of our levels. So it's typical for a bus to go to high school and then have a middle school run and then an elementary school run. And so there's a short amount of time between those runs, but for efficiency, we're just not able to run duplicate runs. So, you know, a strategy could be to de-densify the buses, encourage families to perhaps drive their, drive their kids, walk if possible, obviously safely, or students for the ride of bikes or so forth, weather permitting, what options there would be. And so the other, of the over 2,000 responses, we did have families that were willing to decline school transportation. And just judging from the ridership that we, that we have daily, including, you know, almost 4,300 students, both private and public schools. You know, this, this would allow us to de-densify the buses by approximately 17%, which would, again, that would be, wouldn't be necessarily spread evenly and could affect some runs more than others. But it would, it would have, give us an opportunity to schedule the buses in a way that we could hopefully keep two students to, to a seat, which still isn't, is not ideal, but better than three, certainly. So moving on to the scenarios, what the approach that we have had to, to this complex situation is having our, our committees look at the different scenarios from their multiple perspectives. And as I shared earlier, we want to plan for multiple perspectives and multiple scenarios. And so each of our subcommittees have engaged in action steps that are occurring regardless of what scenario we pursue. So we have a series of health and safety protocols, procedures that are being formalized. I'm not going to read each of these, but you can see the vast number of procedures that are health and safety procedures that have to be in place if we were to receive any students at all. And obviously, the more students that we would be welcoming back, the more challenging the procedures would be. But we have to plan for all of those. And so there's a series of procedures ranging from preparing nursing suites and isolation rooms with, you know, air compressors to hand washing and covering cough and sneeze guidelines for, for students. People, uses of PPE guidelines for observing system, excuse me, symptoms and responding to, responding to scenarios where a student may, may, may be showing symptoms. So there are a tremendous number of procedures in place, many of which have been formalized, some of which that are still, we're still working on, but to ensure that they're, they're in place. In additional, in addition to the health and safety guidelines, we have several different procedures in place to support students' social, emotional well-being, including some professional development around incorporating the importance of building relationships, trauma-informed care and equity, ensuring that we have intervention and supports to meet students' social, emotional needs, looking at how we provide supports for students and whether or not they, who can be possible providers of those supports. So that we want to ensure that we're supporting students from a social, emotional standpoint at all times. And we know that those particular challenges are, are really important now because we know families and individuals are being impacted in a lot of ways, and our surveys shared that. We have families that have been impacted by this. And then, and, and it is creating, you know, social, emotional toll on students. And we know that some of that can be, can be responded to when we have students in session. And if we are not in session, there are other challenges around students' social, emotional well-being. Some operation and logistics procedures, again, these, there are a lot of these, but we've been formalizing these and many of them secured. We have, you know, solidified some custodial responsibilities that have been clarified in detail. So we know that what intensified cleaning could look like. We have some of the, the necessary cleaning and sanitizing materials, including adding some machines and foggers, electrostatic spraying machines, and installing some plastic, plexiglass around the district. But also there's a whole staff training component of this, which has already begun on chemicals, proper use of PPE, CDC guidelines, OSHA standards, blood port pathogens, and so forth. And a particular area focus around, you know, HVAC inspection to ensure that we have filter cleaning upgrades and ensure that air circulation is, is to the extent that we, we need it to be. We've also established some additional building-based operations and logistics. So exactly like what, what are some of these procedures look like by the building? And so, you know, there's signage in each building, but it may look different in each building. Nurses' offices in each building have been restructured to ensure there is isolation spaces, additional plexiglass, additional PPE. There are heat response procedures for specific buildings, we're thinking Keith Valley specifically, with it being absent air conditioning, knowing that, you know, September particularly could be a challenging location for Keith Valley with heat and some guidelines for how we would respond to that, and perhaps transition to remote learning in the event of certain temperature hitting, hitting the temperature, again, if we were to return. Hand washing schedules and protocols being in place, and outdoor recess, like those types of things look different building by building. But what we know is that the, the procedures that we're used to will look different. Procedures for students, procedures for operation staff, procedures for our drivers, even with, with the measures that are going to be in place, the, the expect, the, the, what it will look like for students will, will be different. We've looked at food services as well, and, you know, food services, again, one of those things that could look different by level. We have much better options, quite honestly, at the elementary level than we do at the secondary level. But there are, that's just because of the, the numbers that we have at the secondary level and some of the limitations with some of the space at the secondary level. But we've looked at, you know, limiting some menu of grab and go options, ensuring there's pre-ordering, swipe cards for payments, making sure that we have spaces for kids to eat. Especially at the elementary school, we think we have some good, good responses to potentially having students eat in the classroom if necessary. Because our spacing is going to be, is going to be limited. And of course, we need to establish meal service protocols for students that would be learning remotely. Our responsibility to ensure that meals are provided is not just for students who are in person, but for students at the Hatter Academy, or if we are in a remote learning environment. Talked a little bit about transportation, but just to, to add to that, there are some additional health and safety steps that have been in place for, for transportation as far as, you know, enhanced routines for sanitizing the buses and a fogging bus, fogging buses after AM and PM runs, but also drivers kind of wiping high-touch areas between the runs. So again, as I mentioned, driver could go from a high school run to a middle school run with some cleaning in between, and then cleaning in between that and the middle and elementary run. But also encouraging families to, to drive students when possible. And we know that that would result in us having to have some significant changes to what arrival would look like at each building. If we have a lot more drivers, that we'd have to structure our arrival for, for those drivers differently and most likely have to spread that timeout. So from a technology standpoint, we have quite the operation going on over at Happer-Horsham High School with the summer, with the technology department has really been doing an amazing job of preparing devices, K-12. We have a group of students there working, that are working with us as well, that are doing a tremendous job at just preparing the devices. So this, the efforts have been intensified, and that is being done to ensure that every student has a device in August before we start school and day one. We are prepared to do that, we have a plan in place for that. The communication to families will begin this week, as early as tomorrow, for device pickup and for anywhere, for all students, K-12. And so that is spread out over the next few weeks, but the schedule, that will be detailed in the communication we provide. So, you know, that's a, that's a point of pride for us moving forward as we have that, to have that resolved prior to day one. We continue to work with families to ensure connectivity is in the home and encourage any of you who have those connection issues to please reach out to us. We are doing our best to assess that as well, but we want to ensure that there's connectivity in the home for families. And then some just instructional planning around what the technology should look like for the delivery of instruction, whether it's in the hybrid model or a remote model, or if we're fully in person. How are we using Teams? How are we using Canvas? What is, how, what are the skills necessary for our learning management system that can communicate with our students and families our learning expectations in a way that is both consistent and makes sense for, for, to support our learning? And I want to share with you some of the progress that our instructional committee has made. One of the things, you know, we heard, we heard a lot of feedback, both at last meeting, the last meeting that we held, and, and since then, and also through the reopening, about some concerns about what remote instruction could and should look like. And so we've, we've heard that, and I want to speak to some of that today in the, in the presentation. But the instructional committee is continuing to clarify instructional expectations for each of the scenarios. We're identifying high leverage needs and setting up a whole professional learning range of opportunities for staff, both in the short term. range of opportunities for staff, both in the short term and long term. And long term meaning throughout the school year as, as we are in the midst of this, in the fall, whatever model we may be in, we still will have to continue to prepare for transitioning to different models and of course, hopefully return students in full as, as quickly as we, as we possibly can do so safely. And we're also looking at the, the protocols in place for how we would support students' education program if they had to be out of school for any reason. If there was a health cause for a student to be out, how we could continue and maintain that program. And our Hatter Academy planning has been very aligned with our instructional planning to ensure that we have some instructional continuity regardless of, of program. We have established a professional development framework that begins this week. Will continue through August for staff. And then as staff contractually returns near the start of the school year, have a robust range of professional development opportunities for family. I mean, sorry, for our teachers to engage in. But you can see some of the core learning aspects that we have in place for staff for both learning technology and platforms, but also strategies for engaging learners in different, in different environments. So, you know, how do you best engage and assess students in an asynchronous setting? How do you best engage students and, and learners in, in a synchronous setting? How do you do both at the same time? And that's, that's, that is, that's a challenge. And then continuing to improve in, in areas of student engagement, supporting classroom dialogue. How are we getting students to engage with one another in these various venues? And assessment for learning, again, how do you assess students in a remote setting or on our platform setting, whether we're in a, in a, in a hybrid or a remote? So I'm going to talk again, a little more in depth about each of the options and what we've learned about each of these, each of the scenarios as we continue to look. So our first option that we asked folks about and we continue to explore is what will instruction look like in a fully remote setting? So what we know is that the, the, we have challenged ourselves, of course, to improve upon what was delivered in the spring. In the event that we were to go remote, we obviously want to make sure that we're doing so at a much more rigorous level, challenging students to be engaged on a much different level than they had been in the spring. And I say that not critically, but just shifting from the opportunity to, or the challenge of having to shift so quickly to emergency remote learning to a little bit more of a systemic and planned delivery of what remote instruction could look like. So we do know, looking at some advantages and disadvantages of each of the models, that remote learning provides the safest of the learning environments. Obviously, students within that would not be in the building. The, the threat of transmission of COVID would be minimal, certainly in the student, in the school environment. So we know that that's the safest of, of the options. The expectations that we'll have in place is that they'll have multiple connections with teachers daily. And that, that is important for students to be able to see their teacher multiple times and connect with peers multiple times throughout, throughout the day. Consistency and structure and instructional delivery. We know that, you know, with moving to a remote model, we'll be able to provide a consistent structure both across levels, across buildings, across grades, and a consistent instructional delivery method. And the instructional program can be fully delivered. And I don't want to, I don't want to minimize this advantage here because, and you'll hear, when we talk about this, we talk about the, the, the other options. And, and that is that, you know, what we found as we've tried to operationalize these, these different models is that in each model, something is compromised. In some ways, you, you can't deliver the, the full program. I'll give you an example, in, in a hybrid model, you have a series of robust elective choices at the, at the high school level. Some of those don't meet every day. Delivering those effectively in a hybrid model could be done, but it would be done with some sacrifice. You know, not, not having, not having the opportunity to connect with that level of regularity could be a challenge. I'll talk about each of those when we get, when we get to the other, other scenarios as well. Certainly some disadvantages with each scenario and with remote learning. You know, disadvantages of students would, students would be missing the in-person direct instruction. We know that that doesn't work well for all students. You know, I'm a, a long time educator and I, I believe in the power of the connect, the student and teacher connection. I think that that's something that's obviously extremely important. We know that some students didn't, didn't respond as well as, as well as optimal, we would want optimally in the virtual learning. It's also challenging to connect with peers. And we know that we've heard, you know, I saw this with my own kids at home. I'm sure that you've seen this as well. It's just difficult for students, they, students want to connect with one another. They want to be with one another. Sometimes when they connect, they're connecting too closely with one another in, in this day and age. But they, they are yearning for that connection. We know some of those challenges around connection would be present with, with a remote learning environment. And we understand the, the, the challenge that this creates for parents and guardians and supporting learners. Obviously, from a childcare standpoint, but particularly with our youngest learners or learners with special needs that, you know, in, in many cases require an adult to help them and support them. I will say we've had some, we had some really great success with our summer academy with some of our youngest learners and able to, to work on this in a smaller, in a smaller venue with a smaller number of students. But I, I had the opportunity to witness that program, was extremely impressed with the level of student engagement from our youngest learners in the summer academy. It was all virtual. Teachers did a phenomenal job of, of, of implementing different strategies to engage students and they were sustained, there was sustained engagement for a long period of time, both synchronously and asynchronously. So we did see some real growth in that area and I think that was, that was a room, an, an area of celebration. So we've worked through some sample schedules and I, I want to just reiterate that these are, are samples at, at this, at this time. Clearly, if we were in a remote learning environment fully, we would have some flexibility with issues such as like when we would start the day. Like there's not, we don't have to feel quite as compelled in a, in a situation that we didn't have transportation and necessarily start the high school day right at 7:30. But the sample schedules that the subcommittees have worked through give you a sense of the opportunity for students to connect with each teacher every day, both synchronously and asynchronously. So, you know, if you have this, again, a high school schedule, so you're looking at the 75-minute block of time for a student to be in class. We're not planning for that to be synchronous the entire time. But let's be, let's be real, it's not synchronous the entire time when students are in front of us. There is asynchronous time even in that moment that, you know, seat work, there's, there's group work. There's other things that happen in, when we are meeting in, in session. It's not teacher lecturing for an hour and 15 minutes. We wouldn't want that, students wouldn't want that. So, but an opportunity for students to connect with their teacher, each teacher, each day is, is something that we believe we can deliver in, in, in a very structured way, in consistent way. So similarly, at the middle school level, again, not too much different than what I just talked about at the high school level, but an opportunity to deliver the full program included, including your, you know, special area classes and have synchronous and some asynchronous time built into your day, but also reasonable, you know, reasonable times for break. And, you know, one of the things that we've, you know, some of the researchers have shared with us about, about transitioning to any type of synchronous model is you don't want to have kids in front of the screen for six hours. That's not, that's not what we're, that's not optimal either. The engagement is the measurement that, that is, that is important. And so ways that we can engage, engage students both middle school, high school and elementary school with some sample schedules. Again, these are all samples and we'll work through some of the details. You know, our message and even today was this, this work is continuing and we continue to refine and, and work through details as we move forward. And this is looking at an elementary, at an elementary day. Again, with some morning routine, opportunities to connect, different, so different subject areas. But also you see like incorporating in some movement breaks, some snack breaks, which we know our younger learners will need more of those that are just more to ensure that their schedule is also developmentally appropriate in a way to, to meet their needs. But we built in, you know, connection at the beginning of the day, connection at the end of the day. I think that's really important to wrap up and have that sense of summary for, for students and families, both at the, at the elementary level. So transitioning to option two, when we're looking at the hybrid. And this, as I, as I've shared before, is the, is the model that it's intriguing, but it's also the most unfamiliar. And there's some unique challenges to this because, you know, we, I think all of us, well, we all know what in-person instruction looks like daily. We also had a, have a sense of what remote instruction looks like when we connected in the spring and we can visualize what that looks like. The hybrid model is a little bit more challenging to, to visualize and there's a little more intricacy to it. But it does certainly have its advantages and disadvantages. So obviously, as an advantage, as an advantage over remote learning is that students would receive some in-person instruction. They would have an opportunity to connect with their teacher and be in, be in school in person. And there, there's a lot of value to that. Students would be able to connect with one another in the school community. Going to their school means something, seeing their peers means something. You know, I caution you that again, it may not look like it normally would look like, but, but they being in school does, does bring, of course, value. Generally speaking, social distancing guidelines can be met. And I say this with, you know, with a caveat. This is especially true at the elementary level with the opportunity to, for some social distancing guidelines generally. But, you know, younger students, you know, could gravitate to one another quickly. And that's not wholly unhealthy, but it's to be expected. But with the hybrid model and with the students that would be attending the Hatter Academy, we could generally meet those guidelines. That would be more challenging at the secondary level. And the secondary social distancing is still not to be guaranteed to be six feet or more at the, at the hybrid level. Conference scene and one-to-one support is much more likely. You have students in small group classes. So once, when you meet with students in group, in-person class sizes are smaller than typical classes. You know, that has some advantages to it. Obviously, students, teachers would be able to conference with students perhaps a little more easily than they would in, in either the remote or in a full return to have, have those fewer students. So disadvantages, obviously, the more students that we put in the building, the more potential transmission of COVID-19 there is. That's one disadvantage. A, a reality of the hybrid model is that teacher connections may not be daily. And I say that just from a practicality standpoint. You know, you have, if a teacher is in session full day with half of, half of his or her class, the other half of the students are at home. They may not have the opportunity to connect with students at home. So while there'll be more in-person instruction than remote learning, there may be more asynchronous time than, than remote learning as well. This does create some instructional planning challenges, both for teachers and students. It's not a consistent week for either. And that, that is, that's, that's a challenge. Some aspects of the instructional program are compromised. I say that and I use the elective example that I shared earlier with the high school. You know, elective that doesn't meet every day. You know, for that class to meet once a week at the most, or maybe once every other week could be, could be really challenging in continuing a program, a program like that. Peer connection and relationships are still challenging, even though some students would be in, 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 in session. They wouldn't all be in session. Some opportunities to connect with students and one another in, in school may not be fully, fully realized. And we know there could be challenges for parents and guardians with childcare, especially, you know, two days of, two days of being in person and not having something consistent daily does create different challenges. And with increased asynchronous learning in this model, that may be a challenge also for families at home. Excuse me. So we have a couple of sample schedules of what this could look like at both, at each level. So I'll share with those, again, just reiterate that these are, these are samples. Unlike the, the remote learning model, we would be pretty, have to stay pretty true to the regular bell schedule that we have because of students, you know, part, most, half of your students being in session, we would try to maintain some semblance of, of order around the natural schedule that we have in place. So we had, we would have opportunities again for students to be in, in person, connect with, connect with their teachers with a, a student, a day for a student in, in school would look similar to how a day would look when they were all in school. Wednesdays could look unique, could, Wednesdays could be those opportunities for remote synchronous connection between classes where students could connect with one another. Students could connect with the synchronous, again, excuse me, connect with one another. Teacher can meet with both cohorts at the same time synchronously on Wednesday. But again, students would, would not be in session. Then Thursday, Friday would be a reversal of that. Again, this is really detailed and maybe a little bit too much, but give you a sense of kind of what the hybrid would look like at a middle school level. In essence, you have, you know, again, a, a schedule that looks similar to what students would have when they're in, when they'd be fully in session. Again, with half, with a cohort, again, one at home and one in, one in person, one that, in person. And the sample elementary schedule for the in-person cohort and the at-home cohort. You can see there are opportunities for students who are at home to connect in person, connect with, with the teacher in person. But the, the schedule would be very structured like a, like a normal day for students in, in, in a hybrid model. There'd be some disruption, not disruption, a, a change of delivery of some of the special areas with, we wouldn't quite meet the same level of regularity. But they'd have a special, students would have specials every day, just to follow that. You know, if you have a five, five different specials for each of the days of the week, obviously, if you're not meeting every day, you're not getting every special every week. So the students would still receive every special, they'd receive them less, less frequently in, in the hybrid model. So the third of the options was student returning fully, where all students would return fully to school every day. And I just have to be very frank about this, that the, the, the operationally, the feasibility of this from a health and sta, health and safety standpoint is just not there and, and not from a lack of effort. The, the committees have looked at details of, of all possible social distancing guidelines and we couldn't come anywhere near meeting a six-foot social distancing expectation if we were to return fully. I think there would be significant likelihood of transmission of COVID-19. Fortunately, we're seeing cases of schools that have reopened quickly with quick closures. And that's unfortunate, obviously, dis, differences in different locations around the country. But camps and, and schools that have opened too quickly without the proper safety precautions or social distancing guidelines have not met with good, good response. Obviously, the advantages of a student fully returning are there. I don't want to minimize those. And all of those advantages about students receiving in-person instruction daily, connecting with one another, resembling a, a normal school day to the extent possible and delivering a full program are all aspirational advantages. We hope to be there at some point. Frankly, it's not my recommendation that we're there at this point. So I want to talk a little bit about the Hatter Academy and what, as we've explored, what that could look like for, for families. And so talk through some of the advantages and disadvantages. Similar to remote, in some ways, there's, it's, you know, it's a safe learning environment with students being instructed remotely. There'd be similar to remote, multiple connections with teachers daily and some consistency and structure. There'd be similar to remote, multiple connections with teachers daily and some consistency instructors. So that model schedule that we shared with remote would look comparable to what the Hatter Academy schedule could look like. And many of the disadvantages are similar as far as, you know, difficulty with peer relationships and missing the absent of direct instruction. One thing that I want to be really clear about the Hatter Academy that is challenging is that at at the elementary level particularly, students would, would, who would enroll in the Hatter Academy would be distancing themselves from the school communities that they're connected with. That because the Hatter Academy would have to be staffed with staff across the district and students across the district. A class could be formed with a teacher at one elementary school, combined with students at each of the other three or four elementary, each of the four elementary schools. So you would lose some of that connection with with the elementary school, which is a challenge, but it would be a necessity if we were to deliver this. We feel that we'd be able to deliver the full instructional program with Haverhill Horsham teachers at the elementary level, would not be able to make that same guarantee at the secondary level. And I'll give you a very practical example of, we have an AP art teacher at the, at the high school level. You know, that teacher may not be able, we may not be able to offer that same program or same course offering to a student at the, at, in the Hatter Academy. Now, we would be, we would look to, to run a, that program for a student, but it may not be done by a Haverhill Horsham teacher. So there are online options for a student to pursue an AP elective, for example, but it may not just be AP course, it could be another elective. We want to provide those, 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 those opportunities for every student. But the reality is, and it's, I think it's a, it's a good problem to have because we have a robust offering of courses for, for our, our students. We should be proud of that. Delivering that same robust offering in multiple venues simultaneously with the same staff is problematic and in some cases unfeasible. So we would be frank with, with, with students about what, to the extent to which the program could be delivered with fidelity prior to them signing up or committing to that. But that is a disadvantage of the Hatter Academy. Again, we would be recommending the Hatter Academy in the event that we would be in a hybrid model or, or an in-person model. But if we were doing, if we were beginning the year remotely, we would not recommend that we would run a remote program and the Hatter Academy simultaneously. So I just want to take you into a little bit of some of the data that we should, that we've been looking at and exploring recently. And, you know, I think some of this data contributes to some of the survey results that we, that we, that we received. We don't pretend to be medical experts. However, we do monitor that the health data in the, in the township, in the, in the borough, in the county and in the state regularly. And try to, we, we happen to have the ear of Valar Kushe in the Montgomery County Department of Health, who help us interpret some of this data and share some potential concerns or areas, areas of concern. So just wanted to bring into a little bit of that, some of the data that we have with how we, how we present and explore this. The, the chart here on the left is the exact chart that I shared in the presentation two weeks ago. It's from the Johns Hopkins dashboard that looks at Montgomery, this is Montgomery County. This is just Montgomery County data. And the number of cases in Montgomery County over the last 14 days. So this is 14 days prior to the 20th. Obviously, this is 14 days prior to Saturday when I pulled this data here. So you can see that the, the direction obviously is, was, is, is moving more up and down a couple of weeks ago. This is a trend that's promising, moving downward. But if you look at the last 14 days and the number of days that we had cases over 40, so you have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 days of the last 14, we've had over 40 new cases in the county compared to the previous 14-day trend, where we had five days that were 40 or more. And so obviously, that general 14-day trend is not a promising trend for the county. We also had the opportunity in the last two weeks to have a, a meeting with doctors from the CHOP Policy Lab, who are really very helpful in us, in providing some guidance for what, how we could operationally run schools. And I will say that each of the health experts that have been sharing data with us have done so from a lens of trying to help us open schools. They are not looking to give us reasons to close schools, but have been frank about what some of those challenges would be. I shared with you a couple of weeks ago, some of the challenges of some of the, the lack of clarity of our guidance. I wouldn't say that we are in a position that the guidance is crystal clear, but I do see a more consistent declaration of the guidance. And that aligned with the CHOP policy guidance that I shared here on the screen. And while some that have said there could be flexibility with not quite getting to six feet social distancing, all have consistently said that's the target and for you to maintain a safe school environment, that six-foot number is not, is not a arbitrary number. That's a really important number. Hearing to that is, is really, is important. And then some of the other guidance that they had, of course, around masking and face covering, around systems in place for symptom monitoring exclusion, or some of the direct practices that our Health and Safety Committee have been responding to. So I feel, I felt really good about our conversation with the CHOP Policy Lab and the direction that we were moving in a way to keep students safe. On a not so, excuse me, on a not so promising note, this is the Montgomery County projection, the cases where they're projecting what case counts could look like over what this trend looks like in the, in the upcoming weeks. They have their whole methodology on the, on the website, then this link here, if you're interested in seeing the methodology. But based on current social distancing practices, and they have metrics which to measure those, the case counts in the county are not, are not, you know, moving in a promising direction. The third data source that we have, that we've been looking at data is the Montgomery County Department of Health. And again, we look at each of these, these data sets daily. The Montgomery County Department of Health shares at the cases by each municipality. You could see the number of cases in Horsham at 265, the number of cases in Haverhill at 40. And then there's a three individual dashboards. This, this dashboard is the Montgomery County dashboard. In the last 14 days, there have been 667 new cases in Montgomery County. Comparing that to the previous 14 days, there were 194 more cases in these, the most recent 14 days than there were in the previous 14 days. And then breaking down that data from both Horsham and Haverhill, the Haverhill data is promising that, you know, the, the number of positive cases in the last 14 days is good. The numbers in Horsham unfortunately are not quite as good. With 26 new cases in the last 14 days, and that's nine more cases than we saw the previous 14 days. So that coupled with, with the, the data from the, of the trends of, of the CHOP data brings, brings concern. It, it's concerning, it's concerning trend data. So at this time, I'm going to move to recommendations and where we, where we will have, after we take the recommendation from the administration, we will gather questions from the board and then open up to questions from the community. But before we move to sharing the recommendation, Madam President, Member of the Board, I wanted to just take a moment to, to share with you some of my thoughts around where we are, where, what we know about the reopening options and what would lead to, to our recommendation. I want to start by saying that I'm, I'm proud of, of our team, our team of educators, our teachers, our administrators, our support staff have been working tirelessly to consider all aspects of this complex situation. I think we've pushed one another to check our personal beliefs, to be as objective as possible, to constantly assess and reassess the feasibility and practicality of each scenario. And then after doing so, review it, review it again and ensure we haven't missed anything. I'm proud of the way we've, we've challenged one another to do that. As we've worked through these issues, there's been disagreement, there's been emotion, there's been stress. I think this is all rooted in a deep desire to do what's right, what's right for our kids, what's right for our community, and what's right for our staff. We all want good health for our community. We want a sound educational program for our students. We want to see our students socialize and interact and enjoy the many, many benefits of being together with their peers. We also want to see our economy thrive and our families to be able to get back to work and fully understand the issues, the childcare that families are facing with childcare are very real challenges for our families. And yet there's no scenario that brings us all of these options that we hope for. All of these options bring a level of undesirability. We monitor the data that's provided for us from local health experts. We try to make sense of it. We try to reconcile it with the inconsistent guidance that we are receiving. We see cases predicting to rise in Montgomery County across the state. Now, we see positive cases trending upward towards an uncomfortable rate within our own community, while at the same time hearing constant advice about taking reasonable measures to avoid crowds. Direction today from our governor included keeping indoor gatherings at fewer than 25 people, continuing telework when possible, keeping restaurants at 25% capacity. I'm having a hard time reconciling that guidance with what it looks like to operationalize a school with hundreds of students present daily. With the advice that we have now and with COVID cases trending in a way that's not favorable, what does that mean for us in schools in September? What does it mean with the testing and contact tracing regimen in the county that while it's improving, is not yet to the point that allows us to swiftly identify cases and prevent spread? Testing is still not readily available. Results have been, are not rapid. And, and individuals that have been involved in that situation have been frustrated. I've spoken with families who have teenagers or young people that have tried to get tested, that have had barriers in getting testing. And then, once they've gotten the test, had to wait seven to 10 days for a response. You know, a, 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 a negative, a negative result after 10 days is almost meaningless to, to, if, if a student had been interacting with others in school. The testing situation is a problem. It's a problem that has to be solved. We're certainly counting on our health, county health experts to do so. I know they are working hard to do so. But this, the testing and contact tracing regimen has not progressed to a stamp, to a point that has led to a level of comfortability within our administration or I believe our staff. This tears at me because I know that in-person instruction is what we benefit most, our students. I believe strongly that a healthy classroom environment can foster learning, social emotional wellbeing for both our students and teachers. And I know, and I've heard from our teachers and administrators, they want nothing more than to see our students' faces to try to build these environments where they can see students flourish and see students flourish in front of them. Each of these scenarios brings with it a level of undesirability and a degree of risk in compromising something that's institutionally important to us. There's no ideal option that exists. When we assess the risks that are attached to each scenario, there's one that stands out and that risk is the risk that stands out most prominently, and that's the risk of health and safety. In good conscience, I cannot recommend that students and staff return to school and risk their own health and safety and the safety of their loved ones at home. This, as you, as you might imagine, has weighed heavily on all of us. It's weighed tremendously heavily on me. I've heard your voices, I've heard your, your communication, I've heard your perspectives. And, and I know that, I know that those perspectives are real and bring with it passion and good intention. But I've been swirling in uncertainty as we all have. And amidst that uncertainty, the one thing that has helped me, helped bring some level of clarity, and not the level that I would ever hope for, but some level of clarity, is what to prioritize. And I, and I just think that what has to be prioritized above all is, is health and sa, in health and safety. So with that, the recommendation for the administration, from the administration for the start of the year at this point is to begin in September 8th, 2020, which is the first day of, of school, to begin remote instruction for our students throughout the first quarter. That quarter runs to, that's a high school quarter, and I realize not all of our systems run on the same quarter system. High school's schedule is to November 11th. Remote learning would be the default program. However, we would, we would bring select students with special needs. We would offer in-person instruction for some of our, our students with our, with our highest need. Some of our students in our artistic support program, or life skills program, or emotional support program, would offer some, some level of a remote instruction. I mean, sorry, of in-person instruction. We would also offer teachers to, to provide, of course, we'll expect teachers to deliver the level of remote instruction that we, that we discussed and offer teachers the opportunity to deliver that remote instruction from the classroom. That would allow us to seek to bring perhaps small groups of students in for instruction in a way that we could maintain health and safety, social distancing guidelines in a way that we could bring students in safely. But if, 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 if a teacher were working remotely and having, seeing that some of their students were struggling with some engagement, the opportunity exists to bring small groups of, of students in person. This would allow for health and safety protocols to be fully implemented on a, on a small scale. And we could think to strategically implement a process to bring us to a hybrid model. That doesn't necessarily mean you have to pull a switch on any given date and say, now we're going to the hybrid model. That's one option. Another option is we could, we could look to transition to a hybrid model and slowly bring kids back in a way that made sense, in a way that was, that was sensible. But the ideal would be, well, the proposal at this point is to bring, bring students to return in person or hybrid instruction on November 11th. That would allow us to monitor health data. It would allow us to monitor protocols about, about testing and contact tracing. It would also get us through what could be the, the most challenging time from a health and safety standpoint with the heat of September, quite frankly, with the possibility of, of the challenges with masking during, during September being, being very real. We would then offer the Hatter Academy upon the, upon return. If families were not comfortable with return, we could offer that, the information that we have gathered on, the interest in the Hatter Academy is worthwhile and meaningful to us now and helps us with planning now, but we could offer that upon the, upon return. This would allow us to also strengthen our technology infrastructure between now and the return with the possibility of, of video perhaps playing a greater role in offering an effect, a more effective delivery of what hybrid instruction could look like. We'd allow, that'll allow us to have health and safety protocols to be fully implemented on a larger scale as we move closer to a hybrid model. And then moving forward, of course, the sooner that we can get to full person, full in-person learning would be better. We obviously would want to do that safely and in a way that we can monitor health data to know that we, that could get us there. But that would be a decision that we would make as we move, as we move forward. So at this point, that is, that is the recommendation to the board for consideration for, for your review and, and discussion. Take questions in a moment, but I just want to talk briefly about some of the special considerations here. I don't want to get into it too much in depth. We do have an athletics and activities, health and safety plan that's in place and been implemented with fidelity to the extent that we, so far. And we plan to continue that. The suburban one league is gathering tomorrow. And also, we're meeting with Valar Kushe tomorrow to talk about sports and athletics as well. So with both of those, we will bring forward to you a recommendation at a future date about the So with both of those, we will bring forward to you a recommendation at a future date about the continuation of athletics and activities. We are working closely with our students, students at Eastern Center, brought some technology to, regardless of the opening, to deliver students, make sure students can maintain that program. Should they so choose, of course, we want to provide that opportunity. We have a large number of students involved in that program. It's a great program. And most of the sending districts to the Eastern Center are, are starting remotely, but not all. So there's, 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 they're looking through their, to that program to make sure they can meet the needs of all the sending districts. And we are going to continue to assess preschool programs in our community facility use on a case-by-case basis, based on how the board were to decide this evening would give us some direction for some recommendations around preschool. But we, but we understand the complications with that, and we don't want to think that, that that the families that are connected with those programs, that we've forgotten about the recommendation from, from, for those programs. So our feedback, feedback, we could, obviously, we'll take comment this evening, but also feedback can be shared via reopening haprohorsham.org. We thank you, of course, for this partner, for your partnership through this really difficult, really difficult time and process. And at this point, I'm the president, happy to take questions for our members of the board.
Hey Scott.
Connor Holston. Oh, sorry, go ahead, Eric.
Scott, I have a question. So with the remote learning, you know, what happened in March, we all know we were caught. But, you know, it just caught everybody by surprise. And we have, we had to shift into a mode that we weren't prepared to shift in to via our curriculum. My question is, with the remote learning, with us knowing that we're going with remote learning, what are we doing in terms of our educators to ensure that our remote learning is up to par as, as well as it can be? And in terms of, for the, for the, the students that do need one-on-one and the students that, that, that do have special needs, that we are allowing them time to have some in-person scheduling with teachers? I mean, i- i- it would seem to me that if, if we're going to this remote learning, that we should be much better prepared to, to have a stronger curriculum and one that's monitored and that there is some accountability on the teachers in terms of it being learning and not just babysitting. Which, when we looked at what happened in March, the feedback I'm getting from the community is we really did not do a very good job. And if we know that we're going to this, and we've been, it's now August, how can we assure our community that we are, we are prepared for remote learning from now until November?
Teresa Brown, I want to piggyback on Eric's question. Because mine was, how will you evaluate staff and the remote learning performances, teacher performances? So it's the same question.
So, well, both your concerns, I think, are, echo concerns we've heard from, from our families and from our parents. And so, and I, I can share, it's hard for me to comment exactly what happened in March. I've heard, I've heard some of the feedback here. I've also experienced it elsewhere and know that other districts, you know, experience some, some similar types of challenges. What I can say with certainty is I have, there has been nothing but openness to, from teachers, from administrators, and from our curriculum staff and instructional staff, openness to intensifying expectations. They have been working tirelessly, literally daily on, on this with teachers. We've been meeting with, we've met with the union leadership, teacher leadership regularly. And they've been very open and willing partners in, in ensuring that this, that, and knowing that expectations are increased responsive to the professional learning opportunities that we are offering and open to some of the accountability measures that we have, that we have in place. We are going to expect a high, a much higher level of synchronous connection and engagement with our students. And, you know, some of, some of the accountability measures are a little more challenging in the, in the remote setting. But we are hoping that teachers are also taking advantage of the opportunity to use their classrooms and engage students that way. You know, teachers were to deliver a lab in front of students and wanted to come in and, and deliver that. That, you know, we're going to have other ways for students to engage. But teachers are certainly been open and responsive to, to all those demands that we have, have placed upon them.
Susan Huntsinger Huff. Scott, building up on that, besides issuing laptops or devices to every student in the district, is there a way to provide for families other materials that would be necessary for kind of a hands-on learning? Any manipulatives, that kind of thing for like, for things applied? And along with that, what kind of support are we offering to families to wrap their heads around what it takes to support learning in a remote learning from home situation?
Sure. So two parts to that question. The first being, we, we have explored what some of those, you know, manipulatives or resources we could provide for families. Obviously, that's based on level and course and so forth. There are some challenges, of course, with delivery of, of those, but we're certainly open to that. We haven't finalized or formalized a list necessarily that would say third graders would need these types of supports. But we're open, we're open to looking at instructional tools that will help support learning. And the second part of your question.
Other families.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Understand what it, what it takes and what their commitment would have to be and.
So we have, yep, and I'm sorry for asking you to repeat that. We have, we have a group that is working on the possible, for whatever model we were going to pursue, orientation videos, like weight and resources for parents that would say like, this is what you can expect. This is what, this is how you would access the learning management system. These are, this is what you would expect for times of engagement. This is how to best get in touch with, with, with teachers. And so where we would clarify expectations for, for, for families as well. I think one of the things we all saw in the, in the spring was that there was such a range of what people would expect that, you know, some people wanted more, some people wanted less. There wasn't, it wasn't a lot of consistency. And that's, I don't think anyone's fault. It's just kind of the, the way that the times fell. But what we, what we can afford ourselves the privilege of now is aligning those expectations and communicating them in a clearer way with families so they would know what to expect and how to best support their students.
Scott, Teresa Brown, how will the support staff, I'm thinking counselor or psychologist, where would they fit in this whole thing? I mean, where do they?
As far as remote learning?
Yeah.
So we have looking at, we're looking at all of our, all, all staff members as far as what, we have a social emotional, it's not the social emotional team. It's a branch of like the Health and Safety Committee that's looking at social and emotional support for students. And who and how, who's supporting and how that support is provided is one of the tasks of that committee. So we would expect engagement and, and expectations for what counselors would be doing, how psychologists would be engaging with, 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 with students and so forth, other different personnel. The other thing we're looking at, well, that we're, we've already moved towards is to better utilize our support staff. So instructional assistance, we are getting devices for instructional assistance that allow for them to join the instruction, allow for classes to meet in small groups, for stu-, for instructional support, instructional assistance to engage with students as well. So broadening, broadening our resources from a human resources standpoint and more effectively using our staff will enhance the remote learning experience.
This is Teresa Brown again. A question has to do with testing. Let's assume that either, you know, there's a recommendation for a child to receive testing for gifted learning support, whatever. Will that still take place? Well, that's, it has to almost happen because of the law.
So that's one example, but there are several examples. And, you know, I probably should have said that more intentionally through the presentation. And one of the, one of the, you know, statistics that was on this, on the screen was there's 500, there were 500 students expressing interest in the Hatter Academy that had some level of, of need, of specialized need. And regardless of what model we choose, our, our responsibilities to legally meet those timelines and those expectations don't, don't change. So it may look different, but, you know, to your example of a student need, needed to be tested, that would be an opportunity we could bring a student in on a one, on a one-to-one basis. But the services, and I know Kimberly Myers and her team is working hard to ensure this. The services that we're responsible for providing may look different in each model, but our responsibility remains.
Hey Scott, Eric Coombs again.
Hi Eric.
So in terms of the remote learning, what are we doing with PT teachers and their involvement with remote learning? Are there going to be furloughs or, I mean, there's not going to be any gym, there's not going to be any craft teaching going on. So what are we doing with that, with that staff? I mean, where does that staff fit in? Are we just, we're just going to carry them through?
No, we're, we're planning on, on delivering a full complement of our program, so all of our special areas. So the physical education, art, music, those programs we're planning on continuing remotely. And we feel, we know that that may look different, but there are, there are ways to, for those programs to continue.
Hey Scott.
Yes, Jim.
Jim Greenhall, quick, a couple of quick questions for you. One of the things you were mentioning earlier about some of the, the training that went on to improve what, what was remote learning in the spring. Now, my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, this over the summer was voluntary. And, and I, I do want to, I, I know a number of teachers that did participate, so thank you to them for doing that. But do we know who did and who didn't? And it's not really to, to see. But if there's going to be improvements made, I think it would be important to know that. And then also, one of the things I also heard is in a neighboring school district, I think it's Upper Dublin, they're doing remote learning also, but they're having the teachers do it from the classroom. To me, that, that sounds like a pretty good idea because it kind of creates a classroom environment as close as possible. Is that something we're looking into?
Sure. So to your, to your first question, yes, we are, we, I don't have that information in front of me now, but we do, we do know what teachers have engaged and will be engaging in the different PD and professional development opportunities that we're providing. And again, they're, they're, they are in the summer, and so there would, it would be optional participation encouraged, but, but optional. But we will know who those, who those teachers are. But we, we also want to provide some continuous opportunities for students, or excuse me, for our staff to grow even after the school year begins. So some of the, the trainings that have been planned are planned, training that can be repeated, it can be brought to different audiences, that can be provided for others. So, you know, it's certainly a challenge for us to, to continue to build the capacity of our staff to do that, to do that well. Regarding your, your second question regarding teachers, teaching from the classroom, there, there certainly can be a replication of the classroom, maybe most ideally done when, when, when a teacher is there and has the full complement of whatever tools he or she may have in the classroom. So we plan to offer that to teachers and hope that many take advantage of it. I thought around not mandating it was that we, while we learned many lessons in, in the, in the spring, some of them are that remote learning can be done effectively, and it can be done from the, from the teacher's home in, in delivery to, to the student. And so a- as long as the product is good and the engagement is, is strong, we didn't feel the need to try to require a teacher, a teacher presence in the building.
Dr. Evanslag, it's Jennifer Wilson. I have a question about grading for students. I know in the spring we shifted to a kind of pass fail for our elementary and middle school students and high school. You know, there weren't as many assignments. How would that look with virtual learning in the fall?
So our, our plan now is to maintain our traditional grading system as we begin the year. Obviously, how you assess students looks a little different, you know, and, and how you would grade student work could look different. But main, but we weren't recommending going to, going to a pass fail certainly right away by, by any stretch. So right now, the, it would be the, the normal grading policy.
It's DJ Schultz.
Go ahead, DJ.
Thank you, Tara. I'm encouraged to see that in the remote learning, there is more opportunity for personal instruction than there was in the spring. Obviously, in the spring, it was mandated, we were closed, but now our buildings are not closed and there is open opportunity for student, for teachers to come back and, and teach from their classrooms, but also for those students with special needs, as you pointed out in, in your recommendation slide. Can you elaborate on that and what their special needs might be besides just maybe the autistic and special needs students?
Well, so we, we plan to start with, with that population, with the population. And Kimberly Myers, again, and her team will work with students that, that, based on their disability and level of need, would, would, would really warrant in-person instruction to the extent possible. So those are higher need, higher need students per their, per their IEPs and for their, for their individual plans. Beyond that, there, there will be a level of, of subjectivity with who would be, who would be brought in. And we realize that, that some of that ambiguity creates some challenges. But I, I would, I would argue that it also provides some flexibility and that just like during, in, in the best of times, when you need to meet with the student after class to come, to do a one-to-one conference with them, or you need to schedule a special time for them to come in for some extra help. It's not that different than, than, than that would be. So we want to provide some teachers and our administrators some flexibility with bringing small groups of students in for, for the sake of, of engaging them and responding in a way that, that is going to help them stay on track.
Tara Connor Holston. I, I typed up what I wanted to say. We've, we've talked about so many things. And I'm just going to start with the simple fact that many of our students get a better education in person. And if we did want to grind out the details of the matter, definitely the students with the IEPs and those with special needs do tend to struggle the most when they don't have access to that personal connection that we give at Haprow Horsom. It is my opinion that if we can find a way for stores to be open and restaurants and sports teams, we should find a way to educate our kids face-to-face, even if it's only part-time. The hybrid version met every family on our survey. If they wanted to do it virtually, if they wanted to come into school, everyone's request was met with the hybrid version. I believe through the social distancing, proper cleaning and the sanitation procedures, the masks, the face shields, that we can achieve a better educational experience for our children. I also believe for those parents who want to have their children educated through the virtual academy, they should be able to do so. I've had many people ask me what I would do with my child. I do have one in Haprow Horsom. If she could go full-time, we've all discussed it in our household, she would. The number one, our vote was for the hybrid. And I would not want that taken off the table. I do think waiting till November is a long time. With everything with COVID, things have been open, things have been closed, they've gone back and forth. I would hope that we would reevaluate that before November if we're going to go for virtual, full virtual, so the kids can get back to school even part-time sooner than November. Thank you.
Susan Huntsinger Huff, I agree that the best possible scenario would be to have the kids in front of their teachers for personalized differentiated instruction. Right now, though, I personally would not send my children to school. I just don't think it's safe enough. Even with the face masks and shields, we cannot get it down to numbers that we could safely separate the children in many of the schools. Some, it would work, but for most of them, it wouldn't. So my fear is that the disease will be transmitted through. of them, it wouldn't. So my fear is that the disease will be transmitted through our schools. I mean, if you just look at baseball teams, they're not, and they're not able to continue with the number of transmission of the coronavirus that's happening right now. Let's work towards that hybrid model. Let's make our remote learning as powerful and differentiated and personalized as is possible, and reassess the health status of our community.
This is DJ Schultz. I'd like to, to agree with both ladies that in-person learning is obviously the best. And I do agree, Tara, that's a great idea. We don't have to wait until November or late October to evaluate. This pandemic has been fluid. In the very beginning, we were allowed to meet in groups of 50. And, and then we were limited to 10, and now it's 25. So things are going to move and shift. And I do think we should allow ourselves the opportunity to evaluate so that we can get our kids back in school as soon as possible.
So this is David Brown. I just wanted to, first of all, thank you and your, Scott, you and your team for putting together the presentation. I know from hearing you and, and your voice that these were difficult decisions and, and points that you guys had to come up with and your recommendations are challenging, of course. And I appreciate all, all that work. You know, I, I obviously support your recommendations as, as the experts in the field and hoping that, you know, like everyone else, we can get back in the classroom as soon as possible, in the safest way possible. And hopefully this, you know, passes in, in a timeframe that, that works, that works. And if we do need to make, excuse me, adjustments, we can certainly do that from the safest, the safest place. And, and I think that's a great choice at this point. So just wanted to say that. Thanks.
Jennifer Wilson, I have a question around in regards to virtual, like our system and being able to support that many people synchronously learning in a virtual environment. Are we doing things to pump up, you know, our internet connectivity and, you know, availability to make sure that everybody has access? We don't have crashing and whatnot?
That's something we could look at more, to be, to be frank. I haven't heard that as a concern from, from our tech folks who are pretty on top of those, those issues. But it's something we can look at.
It's Susan Hunsinger-Hop again. Scott, is there the capability, or could there possibly be the capability of live streaming classes? I mean, if we move, even to a hybrid model, I'm concerned about who's teaching the kids who are at home supposedly learning while the teachers are teaching the class, I mean, a minimal class, on two days a week. So each kid would only get two days a week of face-to-face with the teacher. Whereas there could be the small class in person, and the, the class could be livestreamed to those at home. So that there could be that continuity of instruction, like all day, every day? Is that a possibility for when we would move to a hybrid situation?
It, it has been discussed and it is a possibility. One of, but, but it also presents some really unique challenges. There is a, there is a lot of hardware, it's expensive to, to purchase the type of cameras and so forth that you would need for that to occur. We'd looked at the feasibility of that. Right now, it's, it, even getting devices and getting technology in time is a challenge. So the, the likelihood of that happening by September 8th is unlikely. It is one of the advantages of perhaps transitioning to a hybrid model later in the year, as you can refine some of those, some of that technology infrastructure to make those things a little more seamless. But what we don't want is, we don't want kids that come in, in person to sit in front of screens. We want, and so like the, we don't want to, you know, that, them to have to always have to virtually connect with kids that aren't in front of them. I know you were talking about the teacher perspective and, and the, and the, and the teacher video, but being mindful of all that and balancing. And there are, quite frankly, some privacy issues related to the videoing of classrooms that we would have to work through.
I have a question regarding our, our PCAs and other support staff that was not part of the Happer Horsham School District staff. They were basically a third-party contractors. Are they, are, are there plans to invite them all to come back? Has that already happened?
So it hasn't happened. And I want to let Mr. Reichert speak to this, but you know, one of the things we're doing is assessing all of our support staff. And, well, Bob, if you can, can I just ask you to speak to that? Because we talked about that today.
Yeah. One of the things we will have to do is in a virtual environment is, is look at everybody and the needs that we have across the board, educationally and support staff, operationally, administratively, and look at all those individuals that we, that may not have a direct role or responsibility. Can they be redeployed to assist in some other areas? We may have to make some decisions as far as those individuals who don't have direct responsibilities in this environment, what their status will be during this time. I, I think as far as the teacher's assistants are concerned, certainly as part of the educational program, the thinking would be that they would be involved as far as providing support, especially the PCAs, as you noted, the one-to-ones that will be, that are critical to our special education. Students will be involved and the teacher assistants, providing assistance for the programs will be involved. Have we identified and scheduled all of that? No. But that'll be all part of the process over the next few weeks.
Question, Bob.
Yep.
Eric Coombs again. So in terms of us going totally remote, what does that do to our transportation in terms of our bus drivers? Because I know we have a difficult time finding bus drivers and keeping bus drivers. And I know that a number of districts around us are going to be in the same boat. So we may not be, they may not come and grab our bus drivers as quick, but what are we doing there?
Well, it's definitely a concern and something that will be a priority as far as our discussions are concerned. We have, we're going to have to discuss what we're going to do with non-public transportation. From that standpoint, I think we would also look at our drivers in terms of, again, is there any reassignment responsibilities or opportunities that we have in the district in a number of different areas. But that is definitely a concern. We want to, there's a shortage of drivers. We want to maintain our drivers. They're a critical part of our staff. So it's, it's something that we'll work very hard at over the next few weeks to, to do what we can to be as efficient as possible, but also to protect our drivers long-term. I mean, we have to be prepared, as we've talked, in Scott's talk, to move into a hybrid model at any time. And to do so, we have to have our staff ready and willing to go. So some of those decisions we have to make, we have to be very concerned about retaining our personnel long-term. So it's definitely will be a priority once a decision is made by the board.
Regarding busing, when, when you, the way you described it, Scott, was that many people opted to, would drop their kids off or pick them up when we get to that, the hybrid stage. And you said that, that you could de-densify, is that the term that's used for spreading the kids out on a bus to like 17%? But if there were two to a seat, wouldn't we have to de-densify the population on the bus by like 33 and 1/3% if it was only two out, if it was two out of the three seats that were allowed to be? So you couldn't really pull that off?
Yep.
Would you?
If I could make a quick comment on that, I, I don't think that we could get to a, you know, a feasible one-to-a-seat, you know, six-foot distancing on, on every vehicle that we have right now on any model, even with, even with some of the parents who would opt out and drive their students in a hybrid, and, and in a hybrid model, some of those students that would attend the academy, even with that, we would have challenges spreading children out across the board on the buses. Our, our goal going with the, into the hybrid model was two-to-a-seat maximum, which we, we felt that with some of the responses we got back from the survey, that we could better, in a, in a lot of our buses, to, to one-to-a-seat, but certainly not guarantee that we would have social distancing across all our transportation vehicles.
Thank you. This is DJ again. Just a quick question regarding funding. We haven't really talked much about like additional technology needed, a little bit, but have there been grants offered and things that we've applied for to help cover some of those costs? Or do we anticipate there will be?
Yes, Scott, if you want me to speak to that, I can speak to that. Yes, we have been, our district is, is, is set to receive various grants. There was a CARES grant, ESSR grant that was awarded to us, about $329,000. A lot of those funds were used already for the virtual devices that we needed at the end of the school year, last school year. Right now, there's also a CARES safety grant that we applied for and scheduled right now to receive, receive a little over $301,000. That application that we put in, we had, we had applied for, to use for various PPE purchases, some assistance in nursing areas, contracted services and instructional assistance, technology, software needs, and also remote learning devices and materials. I think right now, with the fully virtual recommendation, we might revise some of our strategies as far as how to spend that money, geared more towards the remote learning devices and materials and software needs. And then I think part of our plan was to reallocate some of our PPE requirements to Pima and, and those programs and funding that's available. We're also continuing to monitor opportunities through the local, state and federal programs, work with other districts on cooperative purchasing. I mean, there's been even some donations in some areas. So I think we're in, in good position to fund our needs for the program. And we're going to, we're going to do whatever we have to do to get the right resources in place to deliver high-quality education. That's what it comes down to.
Teresa Brown, I, I was just listening to this and thinking that I, I'm glad that you're starting with remote, because it sounds like we have a lot of things to resolve in order to go to hybrid. And the statement about bus, a mask is not a substitute for distance. With the two people on the bus, on the seat, that, that could be a problem right now, certainly would be. So I'm glad we're starting with remote. And I go back to Tara's, you know, comment that says, we'll reevaluate that, you know, in a few weeks to see how it's going, if we can change. But I just wanted to make that statement.
Are there any more comments or questions from the board? If not, we can move on to public comment. Okay. So I'm going to move on to a public comment. So this is the time for the public to offer their comments. As a reminder, the board generally does not engage in dialogue during the public comment. We will take note of your questions and, you know, as we get a couple of questions around the same theme, we will answer those. Any members of the public wishing to make a comment during a remote board meeting can connect to the meeting either by computer or telephone, or they have the ability to submit a question by email to virtualboardcomments@happrehorsham.org. When you join the Zoom meeting, please make sure you use your full name in Zoom so that your name is published in the participant list. If you wish to speak during the public comment session, please raise your hand now. You can raise your hand by hovering your mouse over the bottom Zoom toolbar and clicking the raise hand button. Or if you have called in, you can press the star nine on your phone. This is going to alert the meeting host that you wish to speak. When it is your turn, you will be changed to a speaking role and prompted that it is your turn to speak. Speaking is limited to three minutes, and when the time has expired, you will be returned to the status of meeting participant. All other normal procedures for public comments apply. Please state your name, address and municipality residence. Again, please limit your comments to three minutes.
Thank you, Madam President. All right. First, the list is Ms. Polanski. You can go ahead and speak.
Hello? You can hear me. It's Polanski. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
And I, I, in all deference to our superintendent, there's plenty of statistics out there and you can pick the one that fits your cause. I've looked at the American Academy of Pediatrics. They say the percentage, the, the chance of someone under 18 dying from this is practically zero. The CDC says 37 deaths have occurred of individuals under 18, and those all had comorbidities out of 338,000 children under 18 who tested positive. You use the PA case, I'll take it from your own screen, 7,209 deaths. 49,014, as I looked up from the patch today, were in nursing homes, which means more, about two-thirds of them are from nursing homes. If you're going to say that two a day, because we went to 28, are in Horsham, how many are at the Abrams Center and other old age homes like Arden Court, et cetera? I mean, come on, I, we're picking statistics to meet what we'd like to have. I got to tell you, I have a daughter that has an IEP. Some of you know me, I used to be on the board. She has dyslexia, dysgraphia. She also has ADHD. And she has a hard time when a teacher sends her a project, and then she has to call and make an appointment. Sometimes they call back, and then her mother has to teach her all day and not work from home as she's supposed to. IEP children require that attention. And I really need to know what's going to be provided. I've left a message for Kimberly Myers. I've had no recall back. I want to know that she's able to come in and get some instruction. I want to know what's going to go on with that, or if I have to change her. I, I wouldn't use your academy for an IEP, because there are IEP academies out there, cyber charters that have been teaching you for eight to 10 years and know what they're doing with that on cyber charter. So I'd really like to know what's going on with that. And, and I'd also like to know what's going on with non-pop transportation, because my other daughter's school is going five days a week. They have approval from Bucks County Department of Health, CDC and the Archdiocese. And they're going five days a week. And, you know, it's, I get little for my tax dollar. I need to have that. They need to get there. So I also would like to say that, as you know, and, and I know some of you, Ms. Wilson had kids in school with my daughter in, in middle school. Kids have been getting together with some of their other neighborhood friends. It's not like they've distanced themselves or they're riding their bikes with masks on out there. It has been going on out there. It has been going on out there and we know that's happening. I mean, you can pick the stat you want, but I, I'm not satisfied with what happened in the spring. I don't think there was enough teacher interaction. My other daughter's school went to Zoom meetings within three days and they're a smaller, way less funded Catholic school. I think we need to pick up and get back at least to the hybrid model at this point. We have to get kids with IEPs in there and, and pretty much that's what I have to say, except for one last thing. I think Eric Coombs is right. I don't need some PT teacher to tell my kid to go out and do jumping jacks in the yard. It's a joke to think you can do that remotely. Also, it's gonna be hard to do music and art remotely. Probably should furlough those teachers, let them collect unemployment until we can bring them back when the kids come back, just like every other profession. Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Greg, you're really hard to understand.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Well, you can go ahead and unmute yourself and then you are able to speak.
Okay. We'll come back to, next, can you hear me okay now, David?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, still in the same spot, that's weird. Next is Shelley Chotel, Shotel, S-H-O-T-E-L. You can go ahead and unmute yourself and speak.
Hi, I'm Shelley Chotel, I'm on Mann Road in the Horsham area. My daughter is beginning in ninth grade this year and last year, I mean, at the end of the school year when we went virtually, I actually thought overall that the school district did a pretty good job in transferring everything over very quickly. The only complaint that I had was that she wasn't required to meet with her teachers online. And I want to make sure that going into high school that she's definitely, and I think all grades should at least meet with the teacher online and should be part of what they are expected to do as part of their grade or their, you know, attendance, I guess. And I think that that would make it a lot more connected. So that, that's my main concern and I do believe in this recommendation and I want to thank the superintendent for working so hard to get it and also for all the, all the surveys that went out. I think that that's helpful and I hope many parents fill them out. And that's all, thank you.
Next is, to speak to B. Hart, DJ RT, please state your full name and your address and you can go ahead and unmute and speak.
Yes, hi, this is Brianna Hart, I'm on Springdale Avenue in Hattborough. I wanted to put in my vote, I get, not that I get a vote, but my support for the hybrid model, again, because we do have that option for Hatter Academy. So you'll have significantly fewer students using the buses, you'll have significantly fewer students attending school, so you only have half of the students who are not in Hatter Academy in the building at any given time. And that way, the students who do struggle with online learning still have two days a week that they're in person with their teacher. So even if, say if you're in cohort A, your student is in school Monday and Tuesday, Thursday and Friday, obviously, they don't have a lot of teacher interaction, but there's that catch-up time on Monday and Tuesday. And then the parents, especially the parents that are working full-time and can't support the students throughout the day, or those with kindergarteners and those with special needs that maybe won't do as well in that remote environment, that's only three days a week. And one of those days, they have the teacher synchronously all day. So there's maybe two days a week that they'll struggle, but there's still two in-person days and a day with the teacher fully available online. And I think that way, anyone who's not comfortable, because when you look at those numbers too, you're talking positive cases, but they're testing so many more people. The percentage of positive cases, based on how many people are tested, is lower. The death rate and hospitalization rate is lower. So even if we're talking about the older population that, that, you know, your student may bring it home to, you have the option to not go at all because you can do Hatter Academy and those numbers are still a lot lower than what the charts show because you're only looking at positives, not basing it on the, the higher number of people being tested. So I think with the hybrid model, it's kind of a win-win for everybody. Everyone gets the option, that Hatter Academy is an option for every single parent in this district. You can have your kid remotely educated if you want, but the hybrid allows those people who need some in-person time to also get that.
Thank you. Next is B.A.R.A.N.T.H.O., it's a username, please state your name and address. And you can unmute yourself.
Thomas Barron, Church Road in Horsham. I just wanted to know, if we're gonna go all online, has there been any discussion about getting parents, teachers' assignments much earlier than usual so that we can reach out to other parents of children in our same, in our same classes so that we can start working together if it's something we'd like to do?
Okay, thank you. And then we ask a few questions and address a few questions, so keep moving through the list. Next is Rich, Rich, you can go ahead and unmute yourself, please state your name and address for the record. Rich? Ask you to unmute here so I can watch you. There we go, you were unmuted, now go ahead. Okay, unmute Rich, he'll leave his hand raised and we'll come back. And next we have Brian Moore, Brian, go ahead and unmute.
Hi, it's Brian Moore, sixteen Home Road in Hattrow, the president of the Teachers' Union. I would just like to, to thank Dr. Evans Lodge and the whole team for putting together such a good presentation, to put the facts out to the community, to let everybody know exactly what's going on. I know there's a lot of school districts in the area that haven't necessarily done that, they've just made a decision and put it out there. I know there's several schools, Archdiocese and otherwise, that, that just simply make decisions and don't put out the facts that, that Dr. Evans Lodge did from the many places that he did. And I just want to stress that, that there, there is not a single teacher in this district that doesn't want to be in front of their class teaching their, their children, because that's how we refer to our students. They're our children, no matter how many biological children, adopted children we have at home, foster children. We have those thirty children in front of me every single day and I count them as my kids as well. And it is of utmost importance that we keep them as safe as we possibly can. Option one, total live in front of me, I would love that. It's not possible, it's off the table and I believe that the district, I believe that Dr. Evans Lodge and his team have put forward the best option that is available to you at this time. We recognize that the spring was emergency teaching, it was emergency living for everyone. We had never been through anything like that before and teachers have committed themselves, either through district offered professional development or professional development on their own to better their craft and get better at what they're doing. And I just want to, to thank everyone that had a, a hand in putting together the presentation this evening. Thank you.
Next is a phone number, is two one five three seven zero zero seven nine. You can go ahead and speak, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, how you doing? Nick from Horsham here. I just wanted to make a comment real quick. You know, I appreciate that, that political comment there to pat yourselves on the back, but there is, there is a choice and you could all go back to school, but we are avoiding lawsuits right now and I understand that. I wanted to address the question that the gentleman had about furloughing music, gym, art teachers. You guys kind of glossed over that and I did not hear a solid answer on that. I wanted to see if that is a possibility and I also wanted to see if we will be getting a tax credit for the resources that won't be used, such as heating, air conditioning, bus drivers, and for all those teachers that we can furlough that should go on unemployment because, not to mention, we should also get a credit because the parents are going to be picking up a large load of, of, of working with their own kids now. So are we going to get some kind of tax credit or benefit for having to do all that extra work with our children that the teacher should be doing and will we get it from that as well? Thanks.
Also, my name's Colleen, I'm the wife. And I just want to say, you know, to echo what the first man had spoke up that was previously on the board, I one hundred percent agree. Statistics aren't making sense at all. Two-thirds of the cases are in nursing homes. People testing now for when they were sick in January is counting as a positive. The analytics aren't matching and, you know, it's, it's interesting because it's one set of opinions getting asked, but talking to over a hundred pediatricians in the area, every single one of them says, these kids should be in school. The suicide rate is up sixty-six percent, stress, anxiety. The fact that this is going to cause and the mental distress on families, on people's livelihoods and on children is worse than the virus. And my, my next thing is that, do we ask, you know, any of the teachers to get a flu shot? You know, nobody really cared prior to getting a flu shot. So I do appreciate everything that's being done and, and I know, this is a really tough job and I, I can't imagine you being in it, I, I really can't. And, and it breaks my heart every day. You know, it breaks my heart to see people losing their jobs. It breaks my heart to see families broken apart, it really does, to see the mental distress that's caused on kids. So I thank you for what you're doing and I know it's really, really hard. I'm just asking you to look a little closer at the analytics because even local doctors are saying it doesn't make sense. And I know you can only go by what the state gives you and the lack of support they're giving you or guidance to make this work. But I'm pleased, pleased, I'm asking you, as a taxpayer, as a mother, as a wife, to look a little deeper into this because it just doesn't seem right. So thank you in advance for your time, I do appreciate it and all the work that you've gone to get to this point.
Okay, next is Vincent Bruner.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Hello, my name is Vincent Bruner and I live on Marietta Drive in Horsham. I'm going to make a slightly different comment from many other callers coming in. My comment is actually regarding the previous board meeting in which the board passed the resolution supporting the development of an anti-racist climate. That resolution was passed with no discussion and without opposition during the virtual school board meeting on July twentieth, two thousand twenty. I believe the board made a terrible error in passing this resolution. While the intent of the resolution may have been to reiterate the district's commitment to nondiscrimination and equality, the language used in the resolution does exactly the opposite. And in fact, it serves to legitimize ideas that are antithetical to equality. The resolution asserts that, quote, "racism is systemic and is unconsciously and consciously rooted in our institution's policies and practices," end quote. There is no evidence offered for this extraordinary statement. What in the system is racist? What specifically are the policies and practices that are racist? Does the school board of Hattrow Horsham believe that the district has racist policies? Or that the teachers and administrative staff of the district are racist? If they do believe that, then it is incumbent upon them to publicly identify what is racist and to act immediately to correct it. Of course, the purpose of such a basis assumption is not to fix a particular problem or to right a historic wrong. The goal of such a statement is to refrain, refrain everything into the context of race. In fact, the very next sentence in the resolution makes this strategy explicitly clear. It reads, quote, "Consequently, we acknowledge that we must look at our own school policies and practices through an anti-racist and equity lens to address traces of racism and inequity that still exist with our own, within our own school community," end quote. What is an anti-racist lens exactly? Conveniently, the school board has no explanation offered. While to the layperson, the phrase "anti-racist" might be synonymous with the enneadine phrase "not racist." In fact, the phrase is a term of art with a very specific set of meanings in the context of education. On the school district's own website, there is a section for resources to address social injustice. If you read through the various sections, you will find a section for, quote, "parent education" and under that, a link to twelve anti-racism books for parents and teachers. Here is where we can find what the district has in mind when it says "anti-racist." Among the books recommended is the "How to Be an Anti-Racist" by Ibram X. Kendi. To his credit, Dr. Kendi, unlike our school board, is direct about what he means by "anti-racist." In the book, he says, quote, "If racial discrimination is defined as treating, considering or making a distinction in favor or against an individual based on that person's race, then racial discrimination is not inherently racist. The defining question is whether the discrimination is creating equity or inequity."
Sorry, that's been three minutes.
I am, thank you, I'll just finish and say I'm horrified with this position of the school board.
That is it, thank you.
Okay, next we have C. Williams. Go ahead and unmute and speak to C. Williams, please state your name and address for the record. There we go. Next is Catherine Bentoncourt. You can go ahead and unmute, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Catherine Bentoncourt, I'm on Marietta Drive in Horsham. I wanted, can you hear me fine?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I just wanted to thank the, the superintendent for his very measured and thoughtful approach to where, where we are now in this unprecedented time in a pandemic. I am a full-time working mother, the full-time job, my husband also has a full-time job. Both of my kids have special needs, both have gifted IEPs, one also has a 504, the other one has full IEP and a one-on-one as he's autistic and has ADHD. So I very much understand the struggles that a lot of parents are going into. I, I feel it and I know very well the great and wonderful things that my kids can do when they're in school and they have the support they have. However, I also know that this pandemic is something that we've never faced before and that the data is continuously showing new and different things we didn't understand before, including long-term effects that have happened for people that have apparently gotten over COVID but still suffer from heart problems, brain issues, neurological and sensory issues and more. And that's just what we know currently. There's also so many debates over the actual spreadability of this disease in children. And I would not, even though I know how much my children benefit, want to risk the lives of other people's children, our wonderful teachers, our bus drivers, our special ed education, our cafeteria staff and everyone, just to rush the children back to school. I thank you so much for being, being reasonable in what you're doing by keeping these I thank you so much for being being reasonable in what you're doing by keeping these as online only. We give everyone the best chance of staying healthy. We're looking to come back as soon as we can, and I appreciate that from the bottom of my heart. I also appreciate the ability to keep my children with their own school and with their teachers that they would have in their own community while still being able to be safe at home and online. So thank you very much for everything you've done. I very much appreciate it and a wholesale agreement with what is going on in the proposed plan that was issued earlier. Thank you.
Madam President, may I respond to a couple of the questions?
Absolutely.
Thank you. And I just, I want to thank all of the all of the participants this evening, not only for attending, but for sharing your perspectives. We realize there's a lot of emotion and very personal decisions with this, so we appreciate your perspective. Just a couple, a couple of responses to some of the questions. There was a request about informing families earlier about teacher placement, and that's a good suggestion and one that we can consider. However, I do want to caution you that we, whatever procedures typically take place in the summer, none of them are ahead of schedule because of the because of the status of the uncertainty. But it's a good suggestion to try to connect students with their teachers as soon as possible. So thank you. There's also a request about the expectations around ninth grade students and connecting with teachers. We want to have some heightened communication, especially for our students transitioning into new buildings. And that's a that's a point of emphasis. So I'm sure that you can expect your ninth grader to hear, to regularly meet with teachers. Mr. Rickert spoke to the non-pub transportation issue, but that question is, we understand that's that's an area of concern for many of you, and we are, we will be looking at the feasibility of the non-public transportation being provided. I spoke earlier to the question about furloughing teachers, but our intent is to deliver a full and robust program to students regardless of what model we are in. So if we are in remote or we're in hybrid, we intend to deliver students who choose to have art. We want to deliver a really robust art experience for them and believe we can do that regardless of whether or not we are remote or in person. But that's something which is very important as far as the development of our of our young folks. I understand the data is is complex, and there's many ways to look at data. I just want to assure you, we are trying as objectively as possible to listen to health experts about what data we should look at, questions we've been asking are specifically that what is the most important data for us to be look at? How should we interpret that? What are some metrics we should be looking at that would bring us closer to reentry? And those are questions we're trying to ask, we have asked, and will continue to ask, try to make informed decisions about about our school. And I just want to speak and about the the comment about the resolution that was passed. I applaud the board for their efforts to pass the anti-racist resolution and know the will that was required to do so. I feel as an organization, we have a responsibility to utilize tools that are out there to help us reflect on our own practices. And there are equity audits and practices that are supported by PSBA and other reputable organizations that can help us critically reflect on our organization in an effort to meet everyone's needs. Like, I know that there's really good intentions behind the resolution, and it will, it will result in positive actions on the behalf of our educators. Thank you.
Moving back, we'll try one more time Paul.
Greg, you're really difficult to understand. If you can check your mic, please.
All right, let's try the internal speaker. Is that any better or worse?
Much better.
Okay. Who knows? Same set of headphones I've been using for everything. All right, next is Paul. Paul, you can go ahead. You can go ahead and unmute yourself and speak. Please state your name and address for the record. We will move on. Next is Rich, R-I-C-H. Rich, you can unmute yourself and speak.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, this is Richard Himes at 13 Salem Lane. I just wanted to thank the school board for making the decision to stay remote. My family lost someone to COVID this year. In April, we lost my mother, my child's grandmother to COVID. I was very anxious about what the decision would be tonight regarding how school would be come September, and I just want to thank you for making a well-informed decision. As an educator, I feel you made the best decision with all of the facts and data that you had available. So I applaud you for making a well-informed decision that best suits our child's safety as well as the safety of the staff.
Thank you. Okay, next up is M S C O H, sorry, M S C H O E N I G E R. You can unmute and go ahead and speak.
Hi, my name is Melissa. I'm in Church Road on Horsham. I just had a question. I saw the mock schedules for the kids with the synchronous and asynchronous time. I'm just wondering, we have a household, both myself and my husband work full-time. So we're both out of the house most of the morning. I'm just kind of curious if the kids will be penalized. I have three children in Hollowell in the school district. I'm wondering if they're going to be penalized some way if they're not going to be able to do the work in that timeframe. Because last, you know, last year in March, when everything shut down, I had to come home at the end of the night and try to teach them, which is definitely tough. I would rather be doing hybrid for sure or, you know, in 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 school. But I'm just kind of wondering how many hours I guess they're doing in on the online learning and if there's going to be any kind of consequence if I'm trying to do it later at night or when it's kind of more convenient for myself and my husband because we both work out of the house. He's a police officer and I work in a hospital, so we don't have the option to stay at home, so they will be with, you know, a babysitter. So I guess that's just my question.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next is H M A H O N. You can go ahead and unmute. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Heather Mann. I'm on Cedar Avenue in Horsham. And I first want to say thank you so, so much for putting our students' safety above all else. And I just have one quick question. Wondering if as the administration develops lesson plans and student schedules, if they are going to be taking into account screen time, most particularly for the younger students, the elementary grade level students. I have an elementary student myself, and I'm concerned with the amount of screen time that will be required of him. So I'm just wondering if that's going into play at all with the curriculum preparations that the administration are going to be going through in the next few weeks.
Greg? Hey, Greg?
All right, let's go. Greg, you're on mute if you're talking.
Justin, go ahead.
Yes. Hi, so Justin Ginhardt, Battle Stave Circle in Horsham. My daughter Caitlin is going into fifth grade. So I just have some concerns with what's been going on. I understand last year it was kind of thrown together. Nobody's fault. It just happened and hit us all. But my real major concern here is I want to make sure that my daughter, who has a 504, and she has ADHD, is getting the best out of her education as possible. I work night work. I'm an EMT at a local rescue squad. My wife is a full-time. She works as well. We have two toddlers. We've got a busy household. So giving her a place to learn is my number one priority. And unfortunately, I feel I'd be doing a disservice trying to keep her here and teach her here because she's not going to get the best out of it, no matter how much I want to. I understand everybody's concern about safety, but according to the numbers, and the data is not complex. It's really there in black and white. I understand that that was brought up by another school member, and there shouldn't be data we should look at and shouldn't look at. I mean, the data is there. We should look at all of it. And according to the American Association of Pediatrics, 8.8% of all COVID cases have been kids. And I'm just wondering if an all-online program is kind of jumping the gun a bit. Hybrid would be my recommendation, and the big thing is, is you're giving us parents choice. That's the thing. I will not fault anyone who wants to keep their kids home. That is their decision. But I should not have a choice forced on me, just like they should not be have a choice to force their kids to come in. So when you, when you think about this, it really boils down to us being able to at least have some input here. I do understand the constraints. I do understand the safety. But when we go around this whole issue, I just, I really think we are way overreacting. And another gentleman brought this up. I mean, if we're going to be doing all online, maybe there could be something to be worked out with the township board about a tax incentive because we are paying full taxes for an amazing school district. I love sending my kids to Hapo Horsham. I wouldn't want to send them anywhere else. But I want to make sure that us as taxpayers, we're getting what we pay for. I do want to thank you guys all for for really putting in hard work. I do appreciate it. I'm trying to get my point across as stern but as respectful as I can because I understand this is a hard position to be in. I have friends that are teachers, but it's just like someone had said, the numbers aren't adding up. I work in EMS. I did my first year, first four years in the military during the swine flu. And I mean, you could imagine what that went in close units like that. And it's just the absolute panic we're seeing now just doesn't make sense medically in my brain. So I could be wrong. I could be cherry picking. I mean, the minimal cases that I'm seeing, it could just be only the ones I'm seeing. But either way, I really would really push for you guys to give us parents the option to send our kids to school. So we're not really taking that experience away. I mean, like I said, my child needs to be in a classroom in front of teachers and away from home distractions to get her education, especially with her ADHD, especially needing that 504. I just, I really am in fear for her education and her progress if we don't allow her back into the classroom. That's that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next is Joan Nesbit. Joan, go ahead and unmute, and you can speak. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, this is Joan Nesbit, 800 Lakeview Drive, Maple Glen. I am very disheartened. I listened to a 45-minute presentation on how the hybrid method would work for our school district and then was let down by the decision of remote. I am very confused. I want parents who are willing to take the risk of sending their children back to school hybrid and any teacher willing to take the risk of going back to school hybrid. Life is a series of risks versus benefits. And our children are being so hurt right now by every action in the country. They are the voice that is not being heard. We need to speak for our children. I'm sorry if I am emotional about it, but nobody is listening to them. Children with IEPs, please, parents, listen up and get whatever legal action you can take because this is not right for your children. Please do the right thing.
All right, thank you very much. Next up, we have John. John, you can go ahead and unmute.
Hi there. Evening. I, John D'Ariso from Cottage Ave in Horsham. First off, just like to say thank you again for, you know, your hard work and time that you put in. As some of the the previous gentleman has mentioned, it just seems a little unfair that we don't at least have an option to, you know, send our kid or not. You know, this, he come, my son is going to be five going into kindergarten, you know, comes from a home where both his mom and dad work full-time. We, you know, as of right now, we have no idea who's going to teach them, who's going to watch them, you know, who's going to do what. I'm curious if there was any thought put into maybe just keeping like the older kids at home, like the high school kids who can kind of self-teach a little more. That would in turn free up a lot of space, you know, maybe being able to spread out the younger kids, keeping them, you know, kind of six feet apart, giving them a little more room, that kind of thing. Finally, I just want to say, you know, everybody has had to make a lot of tough choices with this pandemic. You know, the 17-year-old kid working at Giant didn't sign up to be on the front lines, but, you know, he's going to work every day. I just wish, like I said, we kind of had more of an option, you know, kind of making this, you know, all online is just really been stressful, difficult for myself, many parents. You know, so I'm just kind of curious if you thought about maybe just keeping the older kids at home, younger kids in school, spreading them out more. If you could talk on that a bit, I'd really appreciate it. Again, thank you for your time and take care.
Okay, thank you. All right, next is Cindy, two one five five one four zero four six four. Cindy, you can unmute and go ahead and speak.
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank the school board and all the district supervisors and administrators that worked on this plan. I was a teacher for many years, and I too would want to be back in the classroom right now. But I also would not want to be or have on my conscience the illness or the death of a staff member or a student in the district. I can't imagine anything more horrifying for the children or for the district employees. I'd also like to know, I agree, all kids need to be in school, but right now is not the right time. I think we, Doc, Doctor, excuse me, Esledge made a comment that those children who had special needs would be accommodated in some way, either by coming into school or a one-on-one aide or whatever. So they are exploring some options, which is wonderful. I don't think Hapo Horsham is doing anything different from anybody else in the surrounding areas. I am sure everybody wants their kids back in school, but maybe this isn't exactly the right time. And I do have one question, though. In the spring, when the children were in school remotely, there was one lesson plan for every child across the district. And I'm just curious if that's the way it's going to be at every grade level again when school resumes remotely in the fall. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Colleen Wazalowski. Sorry if I butchered the last name. But Colleen, go ahead. You can unmute and speak.
Colleen Wazalowski, Pershing Avenue in Haprow. I'm a former Haprow Horsham parent. So I'm just listening in because I have lots of concerns as a taxpayer. I do firmly believe that parents should have a choice. I'm, like some of the comments that have been made, I'm very disappointed in the district, in, in the, not in the presentation, but basically with the virtual recommendation. I truly feel that this should be a parent's choice, a teacher's choice. When you look at the data, has anybody considered that the case count, a case can equal four tests or numerous tests per one person? The other data that supports this, right? Most people that are getting this are people with immunocompromised diseases, elderly. I really truly think we're doing a disjustice to our kids. How come moderate universities with 800, 8,500 kids basically do a choice for their parents and their students and where they identify certain classes that really they can accommodate other than face-to-face? Others can do hybrid. Others can do virtual. And they break it down and they put it in pods. I have to be honest with you. With everything that happened with senior year and then, and I really thought that our district was working hard on trying to come up with a very good plan to accommodate all parents' needs in September. I'm just very disappointed. And speaking of a former parent who had a child with an IEP, I'm really concerned for those students. You know, we keep hearing that the IEP is going to be supported. How? Please tell us how. Because that has not been clearly presented in anything that was presented. We keep hearing, hearing everybody say that it's being worked on, blah, blah, blah. From what I understand, there's been multiple emails to the, the special ed director. Currently, there was multiple emails when we, you know, when obviously, right, nobody knew that this was going to happen. We went virtual. It took almost four weeks for somebody even to get back to me on an email. You know, when this all occurred back in the spring, I, I'm just very concerned. And as a taxpayer, I think it was somebody else spoke up. Like, I really like to know where my tax money is going because if, if you're not providing transportation, you're not back in school, you know, we're just serving a disjustice here. I really do. And I think there should be a consideration for the charter schools that can support IEPs and deliver things virtually. I mean, I really think that you're going to have a lot of parents very unhappy with probably. Have a good day.
Madam President, may I? Thank you. Just a few comments on some of the recent questions. And again, I thank everyone for their feedback. First, to the family who lost a loved one to COVID, my heart goes out to you. I'm sorry for your loss. Wish that upon, upon no one. Some questions around scheduling and whether we would have flexibility with students delivering asynchronous work at flexible times. That certainly, the intention of providing additional structure to the schedule is, is around engagement and students engaged with their learning. But we, of course, want to build in flexibility for when that asynchronous time could occur. We are looking at screen time and recommendations for screen time. There certainly is a healthy balance of how much synchronous or instructional time with the teacher is healthy versus how much is too much screen time. So that is something that's being explored as we create schedules. I did one of the multiple questions around special ed and I just want to reiterate that part of the, part of the proposal is that students with special needs would have consideration for more in-person instruction. And I understand concerns about students having their needs met with services, but also with engagement. And I believe we've built in some structures that would allow for some students to join us in person in an effort to maintain engagement. The question regarding older students being, having a differentiated program. We did receive several emails about that as well. And that question, just to speak to that a little bit, there, we did look into the possibility of it, but there is some real feasibility issues with staffing, certifications, transportation and so forth. But there's also a deeper, I think, philosophical question around that. And that is whether or not we want one student's, a group of students' experience to benefit at the expense of another. We really want to, I know it's a high bar, but we want to ensure a good program for all of our kids and not necessarily at the expensive one. But I, I do appreciate that suggestion as a creative way to address this complex issue. And finally, a question about alignment across the buildings. We may not have the exact same model of delivery in, that we did in the spring about alignment. But we definitely want a fifth grade experience, for example, to be a common fifth grade curricular experiences across the district, regardless of what, about what elementary school the student may attend. So curriculum alignment in general is something we will prioritize. But again, it's not going to necessarily be lockstep for every, every student experience. Thank you.
Very much. Next up is Maria Mahaffey. M A H A F F Y. You can go ahead and unspeak. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, good evening. Maria Mahaffey, Hidden Creek Drive in Haprow. I would like to express my concern with the reopening of schools even at a hybrid level. Safety of the students and staff should be the number one priority. The numbers in our community are on the rise. Neighborhood schools are changing their decisions from hybrid to all virtual. Schools and daycares that have opened around the country have seen COVID clusters. We need to remember that many of our students attend before and after type situations. There's a great amount of exposure there. Many of us have children that are high-risk. You cannot guarantee their safety while they're at school. You'll have multiple teachers coming in and out of the classrooms throughout the day. Students will be eating and drinking without masks on. How can you expect the bus driver to safely get our kids to and from school and still keep an eye if they're wearing masks? I realize that parents need to go to work. I work full-time and so does my husband. However, your teachers are there to educate, not watch our students. Many staff members are considered high-risk or have families that are considered high-risk. We should never put them in any position of jeopardizing their own family's health. No teacher should ever fear going into a school, nor should a child be made to sit in a classroom with little movement and hardly any student contact or interaction. Baseball, with all of its testing and precautions, has come to a halt for some because of the positive cases. There is a reason that you're conducting this board meeting virtually. It is not safe. I am asking you all to please keep everyone's safety as a top priority and start the year off virtually, then with every hope of coming back to a safe and student-centered classroom, but only when it's safe for everyone. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Next up is Teresa R A J R R. You can unmute and speak.
Hi, my name's Teresa Har. I live on Maple Avenue in Horsham. The first thing I want to say is thank you to the superintendent and his staff. This was obviously an extremely painstaking decision that had to be made. I'm not necessarily sure how I feel one way or the other about it yet. It's something I think a lot of parents have to kind of absorb and process. My, so my thanks for that. One of my concerns is my child has an IEP with a speech and language disability. And, you know, I'm just curious what her day will look like. Obviously, language arts is her toughest class. What kind of access would she have to her language arts teacher for one-on-one time if need be or with any kind of services? Another question would be, would we as parents be able to schedule one-on-one time with certain teachers where if we see one of our students are struggling in any course, we'd be able to schedule a personal Zoom meeting or even if necessary, coming into a school, maybe on an off-school hour just so that we can get some personal time? And a closing question, you know, I, like many parents, my student depends very highly on an interpersonal connection with her teachers. She, she kind of comes to know their voice and their tones and understands what they're trying to get across. And she concentrates better and she focuses better and she sees what they're trying to point out to her. And one of my concerns on an online model is being able to establish that connection and, you know, being in the deepest learning that she can get out of every class, out of every minute, out of every day. But they're, they're just a couple of my concerns. But again, thank you to the superintendent, his staff. You guys have really done an amazing job. I know this is hard and I, I can't even imagine what you've had to go through to get to the decision you, you, you got to tonight. So thanks again, and I look forward to more information in the days to come. Have a good night, everybody.
Next is Gillian Bickhardt. Go ahead and speak. Please remember to state your name and your address for the record.
My name is Gillian Bickhardt. I'm at 20 Meeting House Road in Horsham. My question is with the full remote. When you did your presentation, you talked about food service and what that would look like for the students. What happens with food service when it's full remote? Will the students still receive food? And also the IEPs, I have five children with IEPs. My concern is this spring, it was very hard trying to help a child with the sensory integration, complete work and complete long projects. It was a fight. How that would be addressed? Will there be more support? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is C. Williams. You can go ahead and unmute and speak. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Corinne Stahl Williams, 37 Roar Avenue, Haprow. Our son is being moved from Blair Mill to Crooked Billit. He has spent from kindergarten to third grade at Blair Mill. And due to realigning of the district and social distancing, he's being moved to Crooked Billit. I'm a little concerned in that he's moving to a new school, not knowing any of the teachers, not knowing any of the other students. And I know he is not the only one that this is happening to. How are the schools going to ensure that the students that are moving in will be assimilated into the new schools as well as be able to build a relationship with the teachers? I also am concerned about the Title I funding with not opening the schools. And if we go past November, there is, there was Title I funding that provided for tutoring for students in need. And our son was able to get that extra help. Is that funding going to go with the students that leave Title I, Blair Mill, which is a Title I school, back to where he is going now? And thank you and have a great night.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Sandra S A U N D R A. Go ahead and unmute and you can speak.
Hi, my name is Sandra Morello, 221 West County Line Road. One of the questions that I have is, first of all, I'd like to thank everybody. I know that this has been very difficult coming up with these decisions. And certainly, you know, there are people that are going to frown upon some of these decisions and others that are going to be very pleased with decisions that have been made. At the end of the day, we're looking to see what's best for all of the students, the teachers, the faculty, the parents, et cetera. A big part of that is holding teachers and students accountable for the learning curriculum every single trimester. And just like corporate America, and I come from working with a Fortune 500 company, we have been dealing with many challenges ourselves with remote employees. However, we had to take what we're doing with our remote employees and still tie accountability to all these employees. So when I look at education and we deal with the education market quite a bit, going back to that accountability. If my son has a virtual class at 9:00 AM and maybe that virtual class is science or maybe it's English or language arts, my question and something to consider is by logging on, utilizing something like Microsoft Teams that many of the schools currently deploy or even applications with your smart boards such as Zooms for classroom, you can still hold the teachers as well as the students accountable during that time. Do live interaction with the students. Those platforms do allow up to 100 attendees. Have it recorded and have that interaction. So you still have that, that engagement. Again, that accountability. You are holding the teachers to the relationships with the students and the students to relationships with the teachers, et cetera. So has there been thought about accountability utilizing true web platforms for virtual learning? And that is my question. Again, my contact information is provided on today's meeting. So if there's anything that I can do, and I'm not selling you a service, but I'm saying based off of experience and working with education markets. I mean, there are many people that you guys have to leverage for resources. And as a parent and a member of the community, I'm certainly one of them. Thank you so much for your time.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have I L Z E. Go ahead and unmute and you are able to speak.
Hi there. It's Ilsa Nix. I live in Winmer Drive in Horsham. I have two thoughts that I just want to put on the table and see if there is maybe been considered. My first one is regarding the scheduling. If we do go online or remote in the fall, having to manage children in different schools and then different time blocks becomes a management task beyond just a teaching task. I'm curious if there's any thought that's been given to aligning the schedules, even in something as simple as just making sure we all have lunch at the same time so that there's a little bit less of a constant figuring out who needs to be where, when. And secondly, I was excited, I think, to hear about the Hatter Academy. I think my concern here is as to continuity of education. Several of the other districts, I feel like have given students the option of opting into online for the entire school here with the understanding that that's something they're doing from the start. If remote turns into hybrid, it sounds to me like that would mean I would maybe have the choice of Hatter Academy, but I don't feel like I would be continuing with the same teacher for my children. And I would like a reconsideration or maybe just thinking about that again. How is it possible for parents who potentially would like to remain online for the year possibly? If that is not something that at all could be considered so that those children also have some amount of continuity with one teacher or one in a cohort versus being switched around because we have to choose this later on? Those are my thoughts. Thank you for hearing them.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, next we have a phone number. It is 215-542-1171.
Hi, yes, my name is Tammy Tuckey and I'm in Valmarl Way in Horsham. And I actually am a former student at the Haprow Horsham District, a proud former student. And I just wanted to thank you guys for your time today. And I also want to thank everybody who's been bringing in their thoughts. As somebody who is a healthcare worker and an essential worker working out in the front lines for the past four or five months, I get that everybody's very fearful and there's a lot of anger and there's a lot of uncertainty. And I, I really wanted to speak really quickly to the teachers and the students because I see a lot of them commenting. And I know for my teachers, I was so blessed to have the teachers that I did. And I know for my teachers, I was so blessed to have the teachers that I did. They loved me, and I love them. And I miss them dearly. It hasn't been a couple of years, but I do miss them dearly. And for the students, I know that a lot of them are worrying, where's my senior year going to be? I, I can't even imagine for our seniors what it must be like not to have a typical senior year of enjoying the prom. I, I can't even imagine what it's like not to be able to go from fifth grade to sixth grade, where you get to finally go to Keith Valley Middle School and, and open up your new horizons while you're growing up. So I just really wanted to, to at least say to the teachers and students listening to tonight, my heart is with you. And I know that everything is not exactly black and white, but what's clear is that your protection and your safety is so important. And I just wanted to send my love to everybody. And again, thank you guys so much for hosting this tonight. I really do appreciate your time. Have a good evening, everybody, and please stay safe.
Madam President, may I make a couple of comments?
Yep, absolutely.
So again, thanks for the questions. I'm going to just speak to some of the questions that were asked. There were, there were a couple of questions just about services that we would be able to provide for students and based on the 504 and IEP combination. Very difficult to get into the details in this, in this venue, but I can assure you that special education teachers and case managers will be in touch with families about what the services could and would look like. And as I mentioned earlier, we are, you know, deploying other staff members, such as instructional assistants, to support students as well through, through their, to meet, to meet their needs. I like the suggestion about office hours and opportunities to connect with families, with teachers. Obviously, we want to have teachers connect with families if need be. Question about food services. Yeah, if, if a family or a child is eligible for free and reduced lunch, that service will be continued, will be, there will be continued providing that service to families, regardless of what the, what the school option may be, or, or family's choice in the Hatter Academy, for example. There's a question about transitions. And we have spoken with principals and our building-based administrators around ensuring that we extend ourselves to transition students who may be new to a school. You know, if you're coming over from, I think the example was from Blair Mill to Crooked Billit, we obviously want to extend, extend ourselves to those students and make sure, make sure they feel comfortable through the transitions, as well as students who aren't as transition grades and starting in a new, a new billing or a new level. Any services that a student would be provided are not billing specific. So if a student was eligible for support through a Title I program, for example, or receive some level of reading support, for example, that, that support would be, would be provided, regardless of the, of the billing that the student were assigned to. We appreciate the recommendations about accountability and the dilemma around staffing for the Hatter Academy. We are aware of that situation and are looking at it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is a phone user. It's 267-304-3608. You can go ahead and speak.
Hi, my name is Nicole. I live in Horsham. I was just wondering if there was going to be any consideration for kindergarten testing. I have an incoming kindergartner, and I know an integral part of their placement and education is based on how well they test. Just worried about her and all these people speaking about IEPs and learning plans and stuff. For those students coming in for the first time in school, how would we even know that our students needed these types of services without the testing being done? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is Victoria V-E-S-E-Y. You can go ahead and unmute and speak.
Hello, folks. If you all can hear me. I'm Victoria Vessey. I'm on Byberry Road in Hattborough. And I will attempt to be brief. I will say that my family, though it will be somewhat annoying and difficult for us, we do plan to utilize the Hatter Academy. So you all can take that in, you know, consideration. I'm kind of baffled by all the people who have spoken, both here and in the Facebook Live chat, about, you know, with their naive suggestions on how you guys could figure this out. As far as I could tell you folks on the board and the superintendent have put a lot of time and effort and considered many things and anything that we, folks who are not directly involved in, can come up with, you have already thought of. I am, but just want to say that I am glad that you folks have put a lot of time and thought into it. I am very glad to hear from people who say that the better than the spring, because yeah, that didn't work for me either. I'm looking forward to working with you folks in the fall. Hope that will be better. And I support the decision to go fully virtual. And if you all want to go hybrid, you do that. My child, who will be going into second grade, is continuing to insist that she would like to stay home. Thank you very much. With that, I will mute myself again, and you folks have a good evening.
Thank you very much. All right, next up, we have Mark, M-A-R-K. Mark, you can go ahead and unmute and speak.
So this is his wife, Pam Harrington. I live on Bryant Court in Horsham. And I just wanted to, I mean, I'm a pediatrician locally, and I just wanted to comment a little bit on, I think, the huge part that we haven't really talked about, and that's what's happening to these kids being isolated. I have personally seen in my practice a huge increase in cases of anxiety and depression, and also just kids who are, you know, have special needs, more behavioral problems, acting out, emotional disturbances. And I think there's been a huge burden on the parents with increasing stress in households, and that's further increasing the mental health issues in kids. Whereas I understand, like, and I thank you guys for going through all of this, and I think it's such a hard place to be, you know, a position to be put in. But I, I understand the ability, inability to space kids out with a full-time option. But I'm not totally following the lack of a hybrid option when we have probably the ability to space out the kids appropriately and have a smaller class size to be able to monitor. I think this is most important in the elementary school kids who the parents are really not able to be able to supervise them. I also don't think necessarily creative use of space has been well thought out, like use of the gym, the cafeteria, libraries, auditoriums. I don't think everything has, has to happen just in the classrooms. And I think one of the other issues is just building teacher and staff confidence. I think the huge drop in numbers of staff supporting in-person learning makes this really evident. So I just think going forward, I think we have to figure out how to build teacher confidence, help them to feel safe. I also think creative spacing really needs to be looked into, including outdoor spaces, community spaces, and in-school spaces. And I think we have to look into not only the short and long-term consequences of coronavirus, but also the short and long-term consequences of isolation, stressful home situations, anxiety, depression, and even domestic violence. Thanks for your time, the guys.
Thank you very much. Next is Haley Goldberg. You can go ahead and unmute and speak.
Hi, my name is Haley Goldberg from Sterling Drive in Horsham, and I am a student of Hattler Horsham High School. I would first like to address my concerns about if we potentially are going back to school, how unsafe it would be for the students from any school to go back. And I find it very interesting how, in order to address the needs for us to go back to school, the council is not even meeting in person themselves. And I think that it is interesting how we are expected to go back to school in person when adults can't even go back in person. Thank you. Have a nice day.
Thank you. That is the last of the raised hands I see.
Mr. Riker, are there any emails that need to be read?
Madam President, I think Monica Taylor, Dr. Taylor, is going to assume that responsibility.
You're on mute, Dr. Taylor.
Thank you, I apologize. Yes, there are just a few that I'd like to share. Some of the individuals have spoken to the board via audio this, this evening. Sorry. The first is from Heather Scavo. She says, is there an agenda for tonight's meeting? The second is from Jane Pedagone. Please offer options. We'd like to have our children in the classroom as many days as possible. We support in-classroom, hybrid, and virtual offerings. Please make an effort to offer all. We have faith in this district that you will offer all types of learning and be really creative. Thank you, Jane and Tom Pedagone. This message is from Alexandria Devine. If we are not comfortable holding a school board meeting in person, why are we comfortable sending thousands of children and staff into buildings together? Doesn't it make sense to do virtual until the end of the year and then decide if we can reopen in-person classes for January 2021? Thank you, Alexandria.
Hey, Monica. Monica, it's Jim Greenhall.
Yes.
I just want people to know that not everyone on the board is in favor of virtual meetings, that we would prefer in-person meetings, and we've been asking for that. Thank you.
The next message is from Nick Centery. Good afternoon. My husband and I are proud residents of Horsham. Our child was expected to attend school this coming fall. We are both working parents and could possibly, and could be possibly facing a loss of income if the school district decides to follow a virtual model. If that ends up being the case, how do we go about getting our school taxes back so that we can apply to private school slash resources to educate our child? I know these are challenging times for everyone, and I hope there is an end in sight. Thank you in advance for your time and guidance. Stephanie Foster. Dear board members, we understand that this is a difficult decision, and logistics are hard, and money is lacking. But we have an obligation to consider the educational and mental well-being of students this year. I urge you to seriously consider opening our schools in some capacity this fall, even if it means a delayed start to the year. Our kids need to be in school. Our pediatrician is strongly recommending that our children go to school in person this year. If the virtual academy is there as an option for any family to choose if they need to, we strongly encourage you to offer us an in-school option for those that need to go to school. We are trying to operate in our home with caution and awareness of the disease, and not out of fear and anxiety about what could be in the future. We understand there is a pandemic that should be taken seriously, and this poses many logistical concerns for the schoolteachers, buildings, and the staff. But we ask that you meet the need to educate in person while taking the risks seriously as well. Sincerely, the Fosters, Barbin Street. This message is from Zach D. Riley. What measures are being taken to protect teachers and staff specifically? Also from Zach D. Riley. If a staff member is sick slash awaiting test results in quarantine, is that time considered paid time off? Will staff be required to use sick day slash vacation time? To whom it may concern, I am submitting a comment that I would like to make during tonight's virtual board meeting. I noticed on the HHSD website that the board has taken the position that it can summarize the comments submitted. Please note that I do not consent to a summary of my comments being read. I have taken time to organize my thoughts, and I believe it is only fair that my fellow citizens, as well as the board, hear my thoughts. Since I will be attending the virtual board meeting via Zoom, I will plan on reading my comments at the appropriate time during tonight's meeting. Regards, Vincent Brunner. Statement attached. How will, this message is from Kathy Kaiser. How will special needs be accommodated in terms of frequency and direct interaction? Can you say specifically how one-on-one supports will be provided? This message is from Trent Mongillo. When can support staff expect to be evaluated and notified of their status for returning to work in the fall? The last message is from Simon Bird. Hello, my name is Simon Bird, and I live on County Line Road in Hattborough. I have a child at Keith Valley and the high school. I am sending this email after listening to the recommendation to begin with the virtual option in September. I would like to say that I fully support this option. I believe that the health and safety of students, staff, and our community has to be our first concern. I realize that this is not an easy decision to make. None of the options are perfect, and there will be many people who disagree with each option for varying reasons, each of which is perfectly valid because of individual circumstances. I hope that the board will carefully consider all the viewpoints that have been expressed before making a decision. But as I stated previously, I feel that health and safety has to be our primary concern, and I hope that the board will adopt Dr. Evans' log's recommendations. Thanks, Simon. Dr. Simon Bird. And that ends our virtual comments.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor.
You're welcome.
Dr. Evans, would you like to address any of those comments before we move on?
Sure, a couple briefly, and thank you for those that submitted comments. There was a complication shared around staff absences, and I just want to assure you that that was explored. And we realized that, you know, any, any level of return, it could be complications, extreme complications with staff and student absences, where staff or students could be directed to quarantine for 14 days or be absent, and there's, you know, a continuity of programming challenge to that. Not that that, you know, deterred us from making a recommendation, but it is a complication that's worth noting. There's a question about kindergarten, kindergarten assessments and testing. And we do assess students at the kindergarten level when they enter. And, you know, we will, we are looking at ways to ensure that that's done in a way that makes sense for students, but it does help us gather invaluable information. That may be even an opportunity for students to come in on a, on a small, on a, on a small, in small groups. That would be, you know, consideration. And I just want to give kudos to our student, Sally Haley. Exercise her right to communicate with the board and community. It's always good to hear from our students. So thank you for sharing your comment.
Jane? Yes.
It's Tara Connor-Halston. Could I just make a statement?
Sure.
I just wanted to point out that those that do want to go virtual, that option is offered in all, everything that we're offering. So anyone that wants virtual, they are going to get their wish. Hybrid gives everyone their choice. Hybrid does not mean that everyone must go to school two days a week. They can also do virtual. Am I correct? Full-time?
Well, with students, if we were to offer a hybrid, we would recommend offering a hybrid and Hatter Academy as an option, as a parallel option. Yes.
So then virtual, regardless of the options, can always do it. But hybrid would give everybody their choice.
Not staff. It would give students.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. So that is it for the public comment section.
Jennifer, excuse me, can I just make, I just want clarification. Scott, when you say not staff, if we had staff that's at risk or completely uncomfortable with it, we would give them that option to teach virtually also, wouldn't we? In a hybrid? We've assessed staff, yes. We've asked staff if they would, would prefer to teach in, in the Hatter Academy, or teach hybrid, or teach in person. That said, we can't guarantee that, that everyone's interest would be able to be met through that. Like, we'll need, if, if we have 120 kindergarten students, for example, we need X number of kindergarten teachers. That doesn't necessarily mean that we have that, that number expressing interest. But certainly, we make every, every effort to accommodate our staff and assure that they're in, in teaching in an environment that they're comfortable.
Okay. Can we, we're going to move on now to the reopening of schools' action items. Item A, the Health and Safety Plan. So we are looking to approve the Health and Safety Plan? Okay, and is there any discussion around the Health and Safety Plan?
No.
Okay. All of those in favor?
Aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Okay. Item B, the Resolution for Emergency Response.
So moved. I'll second that. Susan Hunter-Hall. Terry Brown. So moved.
Any discussion around the Resolution for Emergency Response? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item B, the Emergency Instructional Time Plan.
I don't know what that is.
Is that the 180 days?
Yes. Allows us to address instructional time, the 180 days.
I'm sorry, Madam President, I do know what that is. Thank you.
So is there a motion for that?
So moved.
For that, Susan Hunter-Hall.
Is there any discussion around that? Okay, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item D, the Reopening of School Plan.
David Brown will make a motion.
I second Teresa Brown.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Jim Greenhall. I would be in favor of the hybrid, not in the full virtual.
Eric Connor-Halston in favor of hybrid, not total virtual.
Susan Hunter-Hall, I care about the safety of our staff and our students foremost.
This is DJ.
I don't know what that means.
It means that I don't, do not believe, as I stated before, that it's safe for our students to be gathered together in large groups in school.
So you're in favor of it, then?
Pardon me?
I'm, I'm saying, you're, you're saying you're in favor of it, then?
In favor of remote learning, at least to begin full year, yeah.
Right, that's all I'm asking. It was comment, and so your comment was, I'm in favor of it.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
No problem.
I have a, a comment or a question. Is that acceptable at this time? Yep.
That's why we're in comment, yeah.
Thank you. So I would love to see a hybrid option. But from the hard data that I know is not arguable, and that's what everyone is saying is we need to be a safe distance apart, that can only happen at part of our school. So those of you guys, of us who want to say, hey, let's open hybrid, do you have a plan for that to happen safely? Because right now, we don't have a plan that can hap, that can happen safely.
I thought we asked Scott earlier, and he said it was possible, it wasn't going to be easy. When I had asked if it, could we not do it in some of our schools? And it was possible, was my belief of what our discussion was.
Scott, can you clarify that? Because as far as I understand, and speaking with some of the principals, that's, that's really not possible in some of our schools, especially in Keith Valley, where we don't have air conditioning, and Blair Mill, where the space is limited.
We, we feel there are billions that are more challenging. It's certainly with the hybrid and with, with the number of students that were potentially engaged in the, in the Hatter Academy, that social distancing, meeting six feet could happen in pockets in some schools better than others. We have concerns around Blair Mill and the secondary schools, especially around meeting that, meeting that six-foot distancing, especially transit cafeteria time and arrival dismissal and other times when, when folks are gathered in, in lar, in large spaces. So it, I, I wouldn't be able to say with a great deal of confidence that we'd be able to meet six feet consistently in our buildings.
This is Jim Greenhall. Scott, a quick question on that. With that being your, your comment you just made, why is hybrid even an option then, if it's not possible?
I, I, I'm sorry, can I just jump in here? Because we've been through so many changes in this, it might be, it might be possible down the road. Again, when we started this in, in March, we were allowed to have 50 people gather. And then it went to 10, and now we're at 25. So I could see where there would, hybrid option would be possible as things move on.
So this is Marion, and my, I, I have like to say something. So with that survey that went out, we, there was no, like, real, like, accountability, right? For, we knew exactly, like, if somebody could have voted once, twice, five times for a, you know, for a selection. So we don't really know the number that would be, would like hybrid. So, so we may have the capacity. We may have the capacity for hybrid and virtual. We don't know that number. Is that right, or?
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure how statistically sound we could say the actual number of respondents would be as far as their, whether they strongly supported or opposed any of the options. But I'm not sure if that's connected to the feasibility of whether the distancing can occur. And so, you know, we, we set out, you know, July 1, really saying, what are possibilities for us to explore? And starting with everybody back, every, and everybody, and then in hybrid. And in that time in hybrid, you know, we were receiving some guidance that, you know, maybe six feet is, has a level of flexibility. And maybe, you know, maybe you could have two, you know, three feet would be acceptable. And there's, there was loose language, like, to the extent possible. Most of the experts have backtracked on that and stayed, and stayed pretty true to saying six feet is a target, and we wouldn't recommend straying from that. And with that, that's why there's hesitation around, around the feasibility of hybrid and meeting those guidelines.
I'm, I'm all on board with the six feet, but we don't know that number of families that would be interested in that hybrid selection. I, I believe we could run the Hatters Academy and hybrid. You know, Hatters Academy being the virtual. I, I, I don't know. It, it's very difficult to say that hybrid cannot work.
I, I, I have another question, and I know it's a, it's a picking a scab. But in June, we decided not to shut down Penny Pack in case we needed the social distancing for a hybrid. And now we're not having a hybrid, and my question is, what are we doing with Penny Pack? And how does that impact the fact that we're going to have a school opening that's not part of, we're not opening any schools? And a school that was slated to be closed is now part of that non-opening? And we're still not sure about how a hybrid would work in terms of social distancing?
Well, I mean, so, I hope I'm answering your question. The, the, the leaving Penny Pack open allowed some additional flexibility. As we explored what, how we could best use space and best allocate and disperse students, using Penny Pack without adding additional staff didn't seem feasible. So we could move a classroom from a building to another building. But if you're not adding staff to that.
We, 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 we had, when I asked the question, were we adding staff? And I was told, no, we weren't.
Right.
So, so, so basically, we're, we're at the same point, and Penny Pack is going to stay open. And there, it has no additional bearing on shows, on social distancing for virtual, for hybrid learning.
So, Eric, can I just join in, in a conversation? Back when we had the hearing, and you can go back to slide, I think it's 22 from the hearing slides, we actually, this is, the recommendation was to keep Penny Pack in the district hand for a year and, and to do with what we see fit in order to then release it. This was, of course, before COVID, release it appropriately.
Before COVID, it was after COVID.
The hearing was before COVID, so.
The hearing was, the hearing was during COVID.
Okay, wherever. But if you go back to slide 22, it was the, the pleasure of the district. Well, the recommendation was to keep it for a year so that we can release it appropriately and to use that as, as needed. Now, we've actually talked about this a little bit. Scott, I don't want to step on your toes, but we could possibly use that Penny Pack as a meal distribution, where there wouldn't be children in the school, but that might be a need. We, we don't know yet, and that's just a conversation I had with Scott.
Well, no, but we were told, we were told when I asked in the June meeting that the recommendation was not to shut Penny Pack down in case we needed it for social distancing as a result of COVID. Because.
And we were, we never were going to shut it down. We, it was going to be, it was always going to be open for the districts to use as we feel, see fit. There was not going to be any students in the school. And on the, on the last meeting that we had, we decided we can leave that option open if needed for social distancing. And from what I understand from this presentation and conversations with Scott, it's not possible anyway with the staff limitations and whatever.
What's not possible? What's not possible?
Using Penny Pack to sufficiently open with a hybrid model for staff.
But that's what we were told we were keeping it open for.
As an option so that our administration.
Okay, okay, so, so, so as a, as an option, now, it's not on the, it's not an option. So I'm asking the question, as part of this package, to not have a hybrid or not have virtual, but to go with, I mean, not have school opening, but to go with a virtual model, what are we doing with Penny Pack? And why is that not back on the table to be shut down?
So I, I think that the, so my understanding was that the board voted to keep Penny Pack open and available for a possibility of flexibility, for options for the, for perhaps social distancing. We have looked at how we can flexibly use facility space, including Penny Pack, but have not found a, a solution to how we could effectively use that space in a cost-efficient way that would disperse students and staff safely. I, I think it's a nice option to have, but we haven't found a way to effectively utilize it.
Okay.
Hey, is there any other discussions? Okay, so we are voting on the motion to reopen school on September 8th virtually. All those in favor?
And I just want to jump in real fast, that this is to follow the recommendation of the administration and to virtually open until November 11th. Is that correct?
Correct.
Can, can we make an amendment at this time? To perhaps write in or to make sure that we can have the flexibility to evaluate before November 11th?
I don't think you need to make an amendment for that. I think that you've given the administration the direction. So at any point, you could pass another motion to reopen it earlier if, if the circumstances arise.
Okay. Eric, just ask a quick question. When would, would the reassessment of our situation as far as virtual versus hybrid be an ongoing process throughout September and October? But when, when would it really ramp up prior to November 11th?
So I don't, I don't envision ever stopping, you know, monitoring the, the information, monitoring the data and assessing whether we can return. The value of setting the date now would be that we would establish that date, and we, it's within your authority at any point to come back and take a vote to return earlier. But I have every intention of providing you with information and data along the way to help you make an informed decision.
Can I ask one, one other question? Want to ask one other? November 11th, what is that, what is the significant of that date?
That's the end of the first quarter of, and we use the high school, the high school schedule.
Okay. So let me ask you this, or let me ask the board this. What are we basing our decision on? Are we basing our decision on 14 days of COVID staying level? Are we basing it on a drop in COVID cases? Like, what, on November 11th, when we come back and COVID is still going up and down, what is this, what are we basing the decision on? Is there, is there, is there a benchmark that we're saying? We, COVID cases need to be dropping in Montgomery County or staying level in Montgomery County at a lower level? Or are we basing it on, it's November 11th and we're getting pressure to open schools? So we're going to open schools? And I'm just, I'm just asking you, what are we basing it on? What, what is our decision point based on?
My, my decision point would be to, to see COVID numbers dropping. I, I wouldn't want it to be in a position as it is now in going up.
Okay, but if it stayed the same? If it, if, if COVID leveled, and we had 14 days of, in Horsham, 68 cases or whatever the number of cases, would that be a, would that be a decision point? Would that be what our decision is? Or is it, do we need three days, four days? What, like, what, what?
I'm not sure we can make a decision on, on that necessarily, as it's such a fluid, a fluid situation. You know, last week was, obviously, last month was different than it is today, and, and.
Well, I understand that. I mean, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not stupid. I understand it. I'm asking you, what would, what would be, as a board member, what would we be basing it on? What would the decision be based on? Would it be based on a drop in COVID cases? Would it be based on, we go back to where we were in, in June? Like, what, what, what are we basing it on?
That's, 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 that's what I was trying to express. I wasn't trying, I wasn't trying to be, you know.
Obtuse?
Difficult, certainly. But, you know, today's, today, what we base it on could be different based on new information that comes out as things progress. So saying something, I would, I would hate to say something now if something changes that could impact that.
But I think, I think when we talk to the community, we need to have a, a, a base, something that we're basing it on, like, you know what I'm saying? I mean, we just, we just can't say, we don't really know what we're going to decide on November 11th. Are we going to decide that two days, the cases have dropped? Or, you know, people came back from, from in October or whatever, and the cases are spiking? Or, you know, we don't know what people were doing in August and then spiking again? So I'm just asking leadership to tell me, when I talk to people in the community, what is, in November 11th, which is the date that you, that we're coming up with, what is our, what is going to be our, our benchmark? Is it going to be that we had 14 days of no cases spiking? Or we had cases dropping?
Eric, and if I may, I think that's, I think that's an excellent question. And it's one that, that quite honestly has been somewhat of a source of frustration for me as I feel I've been pressing our health officials with trying to get more specific information about just that. Certainly, new cases in the county is one, is one metric. But there are other metrics around positivity, testing rates. And again, this isn't my wheelhouse, but, you know, positivity testing rates and, you know, what the, what the, the kind of regimen for, for testing and testing cycles looks like at that point as well. So I, I hear that question. I think it's excellent. And I, and I, in our conversations with Dr. Arkush at the county, we'll continue to kind of amplify that message in a way to try to get some clarity.
Yeah, I think.
Why don't we have that answer now? Jim Greenhall is asking, that's ridiculous. We don't have that answer now.
I don't know, I don't know if anybody, in all fairness, Jim, I don't know if anybody really has that answer now. I mean, because we get so many mixed messages. I mean, it, the, the, the numbers are going up because we're testing more. Our numbers are going because they're testing older people. There's not young people. It's not, I, I just think is that we as a school board need to put a parameter around what it is, a benchmark that we're looking at. Are we looking at our young cases within younger people, our students? Cases within Horsum, cases in Montgomery County, cases in Pennsylvania? Those are, I think we just need to have a parameter that we're, we're all looking at and saying, this is what we're, we're basing it on.
Eric, this is Teresa Brown. I absolutely agree with you. We need to have some, but I agree with them. Makes sense.
I mean.
As well, Eric. I mean, we need to have something to base these decisions around. However, like you said, we're getting contradictory information.
Everywhere.
Everywhere and, and you know, it's very frustrating that we aren't getting hard and fast numbers. I'm a scientist. I like numbers. I like, you know, to be able to put things in parameters and make those decisions. But unfortunately, right now, we're not getting that information.
I, I understand that, but we're, we're setting a date as November 11th when we're making a decision. And we as a board need to come together as a board and say, this is what we're going to base that decision on.
Right.
And if, and if it's, and if it's saying, we're looking at numbers in Horsum for 14 days prior to November 11th to make the decision, then that's what we as a board march to. Because otherwise, we're all going to be all over the place and everybody's going to come back and get on the phone and tell me what the pediatrician said and what the doctor in Uganda said and what, what, what happened, you know, in, in the old folks home and what happened in. So I think as the board and as leadership, we need, you need to like put a, a, not a, this is the parameter that we're looking at. And this is what we're going to base it on, based on November 11th. And that will be our decision based on that, those statistics.
Well, and those, and those. Sorry, go ahead, Susan, sorry.
I've, I've been, I think we need to look at Montgomery County. I've been looking at, I'm tormenting over this for months now. Been looking daily at Montgomery County's statistics. And the most alarming thing to me is the, the change from it being that oldest of our population in congregate living situations. It's moving downward to the, for the number of cases is increasing in the younger age groups. And that to me is, is the most disturbing piece. It was, it was all, okay, okay, it's just the old people. And you know, that, that kind of mentality. I personally have lost four people that I've been close to. They're not all old people. None of them, one of them actually was in a congregate living situation older. The other three were not. And gradually it's moving down to the younger group as they get.
I, 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 I personally.
Keep looking at Montgomery County and base our decisions on, on that.
And the reason I'm saying that is because I really believe we're going to see spikes in this as people come back from the Jersey Shore, people come back from their summer vacations, people come back thinking that they were okay, they were around their buddies, nothing's going on. And I think it's going to spike. And I just really think that as a board, if you're saying November 11th is the decision point, I want to know what, what are we basing that decision on?
Do you have a suggestion on that or, or what that could be?
I, I have one. Jim Greenhall? When, when we were going, like even, I think, I, I forget who it said their meeting with Val Arcoosh tomorrow. I think it is.
Scott, yep.
Wasn't one of the earlier things that she was using in, in to the life of me? I don't understand why we're not hearing it anymore, was the positivity rate that was coming out. And when that positivity rate dropped, that's when we went from red to yellow to green. Now, when we got closer and we are in green now, if I'm not mistaken, and there has been changes within green, we know that. That, why is that not the criteria?
Well, these are good questions and it's part of our frustration in dealing with the county health department, quite honestly, and trying to get this direction. We've asked like point blank questions like, you know, what, how many, what, what would trigger a school closure? If we were open, would it be one case? Would it be two cases? And they don't provide guys, they're not going to chime in on recommendation, whether we open or close. They're going to respond to how they would handle a, an issue in or out of school if there were a case? How they would contact trace? How would they inform people? How would they direct people to quarantine? So, and, and even, even, even the criteria for what would, how we would transition to, to green or yellow change over time. So it has been a source of frustration. I hear it amongst the board and I share that frustration with you. What I can assure you is I, I can bring that to the county authorities to the extent possible. We sent a letter to, as, as, as Montgomery County superintendents to Governor Wolf and Pedro Rivera and Rachel Levine and that, Rachel Levine, asked for an audience. We wanted to talk to, to Dr. Levine. That has not been granted to, to this point. And so I just want, you know, we're not in the, we're not in the same, we are in the same boat as many of our neighboring districts, and this is a, a metric that we're struggling with. I think, I think before November 11th happens, we're going to be meeting to discuss, you know, what's going to happen if, if anything happens? And we'll be able to discuss how we want to define that and, and what the parameters of that will be. And I think sometimes, you know, the way our couche started versus today is, is the whole fluidity of this whole process that, hey, maybe, maybe what we were, you know, using in the beginning wasn't working now. And it's, it's, it's just, it, it's a moving target. And I would hate to just say, this is what we're going to do in November. When, when November comes, it may be totally different.
But you, but you see, the thing is, Dave, you're putting out November 11th as a decision date. And when you put out a date as a decision date, that people, the next question is going to be based on what? And I don't know the answer and none of us have it, the answer. And I just think as a, as a group, as a board, we need to, we need to say it's going to be based on X.
Can we change the 11th to November 11th date from a decision date to an evaluation date? And again, we're going to be continually.
It is an evaluation day, it's an evaluation dates. It's, I mean, it's not a decision day, it's, it's, we're going, but we're also going to be, according to what we talked about today, the evaluation is going to be going on, ongoing prior to November 11th, right? Is that what I, I kept hearing?
Yes.
So, but when you say we're, we're not reopening until November 11th, then you're, you're setting a date.
Right.
Sarah also said we could change, we could change that based on what's happening in the, in the world, right?
I, I understand. I, what I, what I'm, I'm just, I'm speaking from 10 years of experience dealing with the public. People are going to see November 11th and they're going to see November 12th, my kid's going back to school. Basically.
What, would you, would you, would you amend this in some way to eliminate that concern? What would you do besides, since we don't know what kind of evaluation we can actually ladder up to? I mean, even Scott, you're going to meet with, with Val Arcoosh tomorrow and we still won't have the answer.
The public's seen the date. The public's seen the date.
We haven't voted on it, so would you amend it?
Well, I'm not voting for it, so.
We haven't voted on it at all.
And I said, again, I'm not voting for it. But what I'm saying to you is if you, if the, if you have a date, you need to have a benchmark that you're basing your decision on that date.
How would it make, how would it be more palatable for you?
It's not.
Okay. All right, so then let's just vote on this because obviously we're not going to be able to put it in terms that you like.
Well, it's not just me. It's, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not speaking just for me. I'm speaking for the board. I'm just speaking in terms of, if I ask the question, November 11th, what is your decision point? What is it going to be based on?
Parameters at this point because we have not been given parameters. I said, you know, I would like to see the numbers go down in Horsum. That is, you know, something I would like to see happen. But I cannot give you hard and fast parameters right now because.
I didn't ask for that. I just, I just said, we, as a board, we as a board need to come up with what those parameters are. There may not be something that is given to you, Jennifer. You may have to make a decision. You may have to make a decision as, as a leadership team as to what is your decision? What is your benchmark for that number?
And I don't think we have that information right now to, to make that decision.
That's fine.
Something we can be discussing in the upcoming.
Yes, yes, yes. We get that, we get that information from, from medical experts, from other experts in the field and we make that decision at that time. And I think, yeah, so I think we're ready. Unless anybody has anything else to discuss, but that would be Jennifer.
Okay, so we are voting on opening the schools virtual with reassessment in October until, you know, the virtual date right now is set for November 11th, which is the end of the first quarter for the high school. So I believe Mr. Recker, we will have to do a roll call for this vote.
Correct. I'll do that now. Jennifer Wilson?
Aye.
Dave Brown?
Aye.
Eric Coombs?
So.
Susan Hunsinger Hoff?
Aye.
Teresa Brown?
I'm, I'm going to vote aye, assuming that we're going to have an ongoing evaluation and at some point we'll come up with a benchmark. Aye.
Mary McCouch?
No.
Jim Greenall?
No.
DJ Schultz?
Aye.
Tara Connor Halston?
No.
That would be five yeses, four noes.
Thank you, Mr. Recker.
I'm just going to make, just say one more thing. It breaks my heart that, that we, we, we vote on this and we do not listen to the, the community. That, that survey was, was not given for every family to vote once and had a hard, fast survey. It was not a good survey. And I would like to be on record for that because this is just no choice, no nothing. We're just slamming it down there, there, whatever you want to call it. I, I'm very disappointed. I just need that, to say that for the record and that, and that, and it's, and it's, it's fine. But I just needed to voice my opinion.
Okay. So now we are moving on to the human resources action items. We're looking to approve action items, AMB. Is there a motion?
Sarah, is I'm mute, I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Teresa Brown.
Any discussion around these human resources action items? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are no business office action items, that correct, Mr. Recker?
That is correct.
Okay. Special service action item? So I'm seeking approval of the special services action item.
Same move. DJ Schultz?
David Brown, I'll second.
Any discussion? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll now move on to the reports section. Ms. Hunsinger Hoff, do you have a curriculum report?
No, there is no report at this time. We have not met as a committee, but the dates for curriculum committee meetings that are scheduled for getting in September have been published. And I look forward to some robust conversations about curriculum throughout the fall.
Okay. Ms. Connor Halston, do you have a Eastern Center report?
We are having a meeting later this week about their reopening plans. But so far, the progress is going well on the roof renovations and it is a little behind schedule. And they are moving forward with prepping for the robotics program that they are adding.
Okay, thank you. Facilities committee report. Do you have?
I'll report.
Okay. Dr. Taylor, do you have a federal programs report?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to echo Dr. Evans' comments earlier that we had a very successful summer academy program, which ended this past Friday. I just would be remiss if I didn't give kudos to our summer academy program coordinators, Lisa Ann Lieney, Daniel Beck and Diane Hateson-Rader. They did a phenomenal job, along with our outstanding educators who coordinated those classrooms. Obviously, we also want to thank our families and our student participants. It was just an outstanding, I believe, showcase of teaching and learning. And we have received wonderful feedback from our families. And, and as Dr. Evanslog said, we also had the ability to virtually join some of the class sessions. And so I think that's a real point of pride for the district. Thank you, Madam President. That ends my report.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. Ms. McCouch, do you have anything for the finance committee report?
I do not unless Val has anything.
Nope.
Mister, thank you, Mr. Brown, do you have anything for the HR committee report?
I do not, nothing that we didn't discuss already. Thank you.
I do not have anything for the MCIU meeting as, or MCIU report as there was no meeting in July. We, our next meeting is the 26th of August. Ms. Schultz, do you have a policy committee report?
We do, we have a couple of action items in the weeks and meetings past. We have been discussing and have been working on policy changes to two of our policies, 006, which is about this particular legislative meeting. And there's language around there specifically, was, was specifically addressed to make sure that when we do come back face to face, and I hope that's sooner rather than later, we can definitely broadcast or Zoom or whatever we need to do, these meetings out to the public more widely than they were before, because they weren't before at all. So that's 006. I think the other, I'm sorry, I don't have the number up in front. Maybe the other policy number, our policy is about the grading policy to make it more aligned with other districts and I think colleges.
It's too.
Pardon, okay, thank you so much. And then lastly, we have to, and Sarah, please let me know if I'm, if I'm saying this right. We need to get rid of.
Repeal.
Repeal. Yeah, that 006.1, which is now going to be a part of 006. And that is basically needing to suspend the in, in person, I don't know, quorum. If that's correct, sort of. So. Madam President, do you want to call for a?
Sure, so we are looking for approval. Read of policy 006 and 213 and the repeal of policy 006.1, which has been consolidated into policy 006.
Teresa Brown, same move. I second it, Susan Hunsinger Hoff.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Ms. Brown, you have PSBA report at all?
Um, no report except the old business. And I'm not sure if we talk about it now or.
That, that is the couple, couple more items down.
Okay.
Uh, Dr. Evanslog, do you have a superintendent's report at all?
I have no additional report, Madam President, thank you.
Okay. Now it is old business, Ms. Brown. You have.
There was a discussion about bills 1069.
Discussion about bills 1069. What happened is PSBA said that we know that 1069, the agenda must be posted on the. In this website at least 24 hours prior to the meeting, the meeting location. Or agency, they said, or office location and have copies available to those in attendance. An agency may take official actions on items that are not included on the agenda. An agenda that has been revised must be posted at the office location. And on the agency's website, no later than the first business day. Following the meeting in which the agenda was amended. PSBA was successful in offending this legislation. Early in the process to ensure that school boards could still have flexibility to act on additional and emergency items. And that's.
Okay, thank you. Is there any?
I I do have a question. So. Teresa, what you're saying is that the agenda can add an item. Or an emergency item?
Yeah, they have a listing of things for you to consider, Eric, in that bill, House Bill 1069. It relates to emergency. Well, let me, the agenda must be posted and I said that. An agency may not take official action on items that are not included in the agenda unless. It relates to an emergency involving a clear and present danger to life or property. The matter is in sequential in nature and does not involve expenditures of funds or entering into a contract. It is to refer a matter of agency business to staff for further research. If the matter is brought to the attention of the agency at the meeting. And the last one is upon majority vote of individuals present and voting at a meeting, vote to add an item to the agenda must be announced. At the meeting before the vote.
Okay.
And those are the four things that they listed, so.
That's that's fine. I mean, that's that's fair.
Okay.
Okay. Is there any other old business? Any new business? Any announcements? Hey, I am seeking approval for the adjournment of the meeting.
I.
Second.
All those in favor?
I.
Any? All right. Thank you very much and have a good evening.
Tonight. You as well.